Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Antioch City Council meeting of March the 25th, 2025. I first of all want to apologize for us starting this meeting so late. We had a closed session before this, and so here we are, ready to go. Madam Clerk, could I please have the roll?
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Torres Walker.
Present.
Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
All members present at 7:55 PM.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Mr. City Attorney, can you please report out from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This evening, the city council met in closed session to discuss three items. The first was a public employee performance evaluation. No reportable action was taken in that matter. Secondly, there was a conference with real property negotiators. This is property located at 1084 Sycamore Drive in regards to a potential Sycamore Square Police substation. The negotiating parties were the city manager and city attorney. The property owner was represented by Mr. Mike Corin. The council received a direction from its and gave direction to its negotiators. No reportable action was taken. Finally, the city council met to discuss an existing litigation item, something that is called a KEY TAM or California False Claims Action in which the city of Antioch is one of several agencies named as a real party in interest. There is, this is a case filed under seal in Alameda Superior Court. No reportable action was taken in this closed session.
All right, thank you very much. There's been a request to suspend the rules and move item number four presentations, the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Measure W Report, to the next item on the agenda. So could I get a motion for that, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, item number four. First part of it, Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee Annual Measure W Report. Acting City Manager Helfenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite Vice Chair Shanzel Lewis and Member Amy Odom, who will be giving this presentation this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us today as we're going to touch on the Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee Report for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Our goal is to provide an overview of the Measure W funding and its impact on key city services and our observations and allocations of the expenditures. Throughout this presentation, we'll cover all data provided to us by the Finance and Police Department, as well as other city departments. But before we jump into things, I want to thank our Sales Tax Committee for jumping together for hours and hours to compile this report for you all. Those members include Courtney Jones, Erica Ralston, Sam Jorg Suits, Kate Mudheck, Amy Odom, and myself, Shanzel Lewis. Jumping right on into things. As a reminder, Measure W requires the committee to review in receipts and expenditures of the Measure W funds and present an oral written report before the city council. This report is purposed to ensure transparency and accountability regarding how the sales tax revenue funds are being used. Overall, the funds are allocated towards public safety, code enforcement, youth recreation, and community quality of life programs as outlined in the Measure W table we'll look at next. Of the 20 million that was generated from Measure W, some of the top contributors include general retail at 28, 38%, followed by transportation at 24% and business-to-business transactions at 13% and cascading down. Antioch relies on these sources to maintain critical services and economic shifts in these industries could impact in future funding levels. The top 25 businesses, not in order of contribution, but rather in alphabetical order, are as follows. Some new people or companies to this include the Three Habitat, One Plant, and Maine Electrical Supply Company. A few other notable contributors include Amazon, Costco, Target, Tesla Chevron, Safeway, and Walmart, along with other local businesses. Of the money generated, this chart then describes and details out how the funds are distributed amongst the different departments. The police, Antioch Police Department receiving the biggest piece of the pie at $12 million, $12.7 million, which accounts for 63% of the Measure W funds. That was followed by recreation and youth network services tied at 20%, which then followed by code enforcement, quality of life, and landscape, which was at 16.79%. The 3% that was budgeted for those departments were then redistributed to the Antioch Police Department, putting up the 63% you do see.
So as Shanzel mentioned, the police department remains the primary recipient of the Measure W funds at $12.7 million. The majority of police funds contributed to the personnel that are listed here. The largest expenditures outside of personnel include furniture and equipment at just over $1.05 million. Most of this has gone towards the police dispatcher radios and $1.04 million for professional and commercial contracts, the highest of which is the East Bay Regional Communication Systems radio fees at 529K. Shifting to the residents' calls for service, I'll just kind of walk through the table description really quickly. There's two tables that are sorted by the call types. The far left column shows the count of the calls for fiscal year 2023. Just to the right is for fiscal year 2024, which is what we've assessed. The third column from the left shows the difference between the two years, and then the percentage difference is noted in the far column on the right, and that's how the tables are sorted. So of the 74,850 calls for service in fiscal year 2024, the majority went to quality of life, which we'll discuss a little bit more in a bit. This is followed by fire and medical, and those are both highlighted in the table on the right side. It's also worth noting that domestic and family calls decreased more than 30%, while vehicle theft and recovery increased about the same amount. This significant rise may require additional prevention strategies in the near future. Overall, there is a 2% increase in the number of calls compared to the prior fiscal year.
Now focusing on the residents' calls for service. We have this slide now. There we go. This slide now focuses on quality of life services dependent upon the calls received by the police department in 2024. The total life quality calls totals up to 17,358 calls. It is then broken down between the several different areas you see above. Topping that list is unwanted guest calls at 2,467, and that list bottoms out at the scooter complaint of one person. Some notable trends is that we've noticed that a lot of calls relate to disturbances, disputes, and public nuances, most of which require non-emergency responses.
Real quick for the top 10 complaint types. The majority are welfare checks, account of 1,840, which is close to 40% of the overall calls. These are followed by music and unwanted guests at about 15%.
And then next, we have some more crime statistics reported by the Antioch Police Department. This slide provides a comparative analysis of the crime trends from 2023 versus 2024. These crime trends eventually, starting at the top left, we see that the car team calls were at an increase of 48%. In the movement over to the top right, we do see a theft increase by 15%. Auto theft increased by 1.7, burglary down by 11.3%. All totaling out as a total crime index increase of 6% between 2023 and 2024.
Of the roughly 3.5 million that was allocated to quality of life, the majority went to code enforcement. We'll describe that in more detail. And then the next largest chunk is towards the Public Safety and Community Resources Departments at just under 800K. A little more than 300,000 was allocated for landscape enhancements.
Now touching on public safety and community. That department is comprised of five individuals. Outside of that compensation, the biggest contributors to that were professional and commercial services at 70,000, which were focused in on focus strategies, which was targeted towards homelessness and responses towards that, which was then followed by a contract with Catherine Bristol, which was just over $5,000 as she assisted in administrative tasks, compliance, and other provisional best practices. On a high level, looking at the Public Safety and Community Resources Department, they've assisted over 300 participants with a laundry voucher. 700 of those vouchers were redeemed. We have over 1,000 showers provided and so on. This slide highlights the importance of the public and safety community, which is fully funded by Measure W, receiving, as we just seen, just over $780,000 in the fiscal year 2024.
This slide gives an overview of the code enforcement operations in fiscal year 24, which was 97% funded by Measure W, receiving about 2.3 million. Aside from the personnel listed here, nuisance abatement is the largest expense in relation to code enforcement at close to 80,000, and this is followed by the computer operation support at $75,000. A summary of the work related to code enforcement in fiscal year 24. There were 7,640 calls for service and in addition, 2,103 for See, Click, Fix. A total of 657 mattresses were collected and 454 citations issued for things like abandoned vehicles, junk, and also to secure empty properties. In terms of committee observations, we noticed that the high volume of calls demonstrates continued community concerns regarding blight, illegal dumping, and property maintenance violations. Also, staffing limitations remain a challenge, affecting some of the response times and enforcement capacity. Many service requests involve overlapping responsibilities with public works and the police department, just FYI.
Next up, funded by Measure W, is recreation. Supporting this was over 47% of the department's budget, which was for the year 2024. These services expand to provide programs for our youth, our seniors, and families that enhance community engagement and well-being. Supporting this department is one director, as well as 12 full-time staff. Outside of budget for personnel, the highest operating expenses were operating supplies at just over $44,000, and senior trips came in over $38,000. Now zooming in on some of the key programs that recreation funded. We have the Senior Center, which grew by 25% from 2023. We've had 19 annual committee events, which were comprised of residents of all ages. We had youth sports and enrichment programs, which are expanding from 2024 for ages from eight to three. A junior league, a Giants League for 600 participants, and so forth, all of which were funded by Measure W.
As mentioned earlier, the Youth Network Services receives 100% of their funding from Measure W, with over 900K allocated in 2024. They're staffed by one manager, one coordinator, and two part-time staff. Outside of personnel, the largest expense for youth network services was for contracts. These contracts were used for things like tutoring middle and high school students, seasonal camps, art classes, and internships. The program is just kicking off in fiscal year 2024, and there are five key goals are mentioned at the bottom of the slide. Everything from career and workforce development to mental health to civic engagement and leadership. There were 108 internship participants, about a third of which led to further employment, as mentioned in the two numbers towards the bottom right there. The internship program received 200 applicants, but could only place up to 30 youth. And 1,262 youth engaged in city-sponsored events. 45 youth participated in the Antioch Council of Teens. 622 participants enrolled in programming through community contracts. Finally, to wrap up our report for the evening. Measure W provided just over $20 million in fiscal year 2024. As in years past, most of the funds went towards the police department with just under 13 million allocated. Public Safety received the largest share at 60%, while Recreation and Youth Services each received 20%. Community and youth services definitely need more support. The senior programs and the recreation services continue to grow. And I mentioned earlier that the internship programs are highly successful, but out of the over 200 applicants, just 20 to 30 spots were filled. The personnel across the board was the largest expense, accounting for roughly three-quarters of the individual department allocation, somewhere between 60 to 80% overall. And on behalf of the Sales Tax Oversight Committee, Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee, we've completed its, our annual review of the receipts and expenditures of the Measure W, and we are happy to answer any questions you all have.
All right, thank you for your excellent report and for a great presentation for your service on that, on that board. Are there any public comments on this item?
I do not have any speaker cards for this item. Leslie May.
Good evening, city council members. I am kind of at a loss. I was looking at the numbers for the sexual assault from 2023 to 2024. I can't believe those numbers are that low. And then I need to, it would be important to see what the police department has reported as their numbers. It's just, it's like, I just cannot believe those numbers are that low. And the auto theft, increased by 1%? No. You can go on next door. Every day, somebody's getting their car stolen. This has been going on for the last four or five years. So those numbers are too low. Also, I saw they were violence intervention. I forgot the third name of the, it was violence intervention, something. And I saw that name, the same name, all the time of these people who are doing that. Yet, there's an agency called One Day at a Time. I just spoke with them today. They're doing work here. Their main office is in Brentwood, but they're doing hands, feet on the ground, and they're doing gun violence. So they're going where they're shooting. They're talking to the shooters. They're offering them mental health counseling. They're offering them everything to stop them from shooting. These are active shooters they're working with. They have a cohort of 16 people. I don't understand why their names and their organization is not involved in this report. They're actually doing the gun violence on the street. And this other organization is not doing that. They're just saying violence prevention. But it's the guns that's killing people and maiming people here. And they're doing it from youth all the way up to age 43 is the number of people. But they have 16 active shooters that are working in their program now that have said, "We're not going to shoot anymore," and they're trying to recruit more. So I just, I look at this and then I see the money. I've been fighting for APD, but I'm seeing all this money for them, too. I don't know. I need to look at all the numbers together, and I won't be able to do that until I get home and pull all the charts and stuff and notes from other presentations. And the final one I want to say is senior trips. I haven't heard about these trips, 38,000. Are they sending them to the Bahamas? Because if so, I want to be part of that. I'd like to get a trip. 38,000 for senior trips. Come on now. I don't know why these people tend to want to gaslight us. We're all not stupid. If we don't have book sense, we have common sense. Thank you.
Melissa Case. Okay, Nicole.
I'll just, good evening. I'll just keep it short. Yeah, it was really frustrating and like a little irritating for me just watching that slide because I'm thinking in my mind when we're talking about code enforcement. Of course, you know, I'm thinking about how many people are getting paid to sweep our unhoused community from one street corner to the next. I go to Amtrak, and we have folks all down at Amtrak saying that code enforcement was here, APD was here. So I'd be really interested to see. I was kind of trying to see if I could find it when it, but I really couldn't pinpoint exactly where they're getting the funds from. But I mean, even the abatement teams going out to do the, there's like huge boulders down now at Amtrak, like that costs a lot of money. So I'm just trying to figure out where the money is coming from, what they're getting paid for. And yeah, of course, it just, you know, just triggered me. Criminalizing homelessness, that's not something anybody should be getting paid for. So I kind of, I wish it was more kind of specific with code enforcement, but I know you kind of were talking about the other agencies as well. So I guess I'll look into that, but thank you.
I don't have any more public comment for this item.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the city council? None? I have, I just have one comment to, to the first speaker's point about the numbers. The auto theft at 851 in 2024 seems like it's probably half as much as it should be. So I'm not sure if we could check robbery at 117. So these numbers seem like they're, they're way below what they should be. So maybe we can get those checked on and corrected if they're, if they're incorrect. Apart from that, no other comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to point out that the report, the numbers that we have are based on the fiscal year, which might be a little bit different from the calendar year count that you see from the police department reports. So that might be part of the reason for the variance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Fiscal year is from July to June. We also want to thank, and to be a miss, not thank all the department heads for helping us compile the data, and again, thanking our Sales Tax Committee for all their hard work and hours spent getting this presentation together.
Well, thank you for the presentation, and we, you know, we definitely want high crime in Antioch, so it's devastating to see the numbers low. But thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, the next presentation is from Opportunity Village Program. Acting City Manager Helfenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This presentation provides an overview of the Opportunity Village Program in partnership with its service provider, BACS Bay Area Community Services, highlighting its program model and impact that supported our unhoused individuals. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Tasha Johnson of Public Safety and Community Resources.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. As our city continues to address homelessness with urgency and innovation, Opportunity Village has offered a structured, service-enriched model that provided shelter, transitional housing, but also helped these individuals transition into permanent housing. So this presentation will essentially outline the programmatic structure, the key partnerships, expected outcomes, and outcomes that really took place, and the critical role that the city has played in ensuring its success. And with that, I would like to welcome up Gary Tia and Darryl Olson from BACS.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and community. So today, we want to talk about Opportunity Village as it was a pilot program, I believe, for the city of Antioch to provide somewhat of a proof of concept about homelessness and how to address it and what the cost would be and what can be done with the amount of money that was invested into the program. I believe originally it was 2.5 million that was awarded for the Opportunity Village Program for two years, which was split up to about 1.26 a year, I believe, that we had to work with in trying to operationalize about 16, 17 staff along with housing at all times around 38 to 42 people at the Opportunity Village Program. So Opportunity Village utilized a bunch of evidence-based practices, things like Housing First, which is a model that is statewide and nationwide implemented. We've used trauma-informed care and harm reduction in our implementation of services to be able to meet people where they are and provide the best services that we can in helping them to stabilize and get housing for themselves. With that, we had a lot of learning curves, and we believe that we were able to come up with a lot of positive outcomes. And we had to define positive outcomes. And we'll talk about this a little bit during the presentation. But one of the things that we found was that the cost of living here in Antioch is so high, and the majority of the population that we were working, just cost in general, the majority of the population that we were working with were coming in with no jobs, really scattered work history. And with a small amount of time, we had to kind of try to turn some things around, find employment, increase income, leverage relationships with landlords to get people who have no rental history, no credit history, into housing opportunities. And we believe that we did the best that we could. We were able to get permanent supportive housing for a lot of people, but also we had to venture out into other opportunities of reunification or working with different people. So we'll go ahead and get started with the presentation, and Darryl will kind of explain more as we go through. I'll just go ahead and give it to you, and I can.
Sure, sounds good. So we were staffed with 10 people on site. So I was the program manager. We had two care coordinators that oversaw the housing, as well as seven residential counselors that worked as line staff, and all of that provided 24/7 staffing. There was really kind of 10 key points that kind of defined scope of service. Briefly, I'll just say, we had to staff the building 24/7. We had to bring in new intakes through a waitlist that was created through the city, through Tasha's team. And then we needed to implement Housing First principles and practices to try to minimize involuntary client terminations out of the program. And then last, the big one was, we needed to do our best to assist 70% or more of the participants to exit into either permanent or stable housing. So, big scope of service. That's what we were trying to do for two years. So all of the clients came in through the waitlist. The waitlist was big. Over two years, we ended up calling, it was almost 480 people. Many of those people from the waitlist, they would leave a phone number. It didn't necessarily have to be theirs. It could have been a family member's. It could have been pastors. It could have been just anybody in the community that had access to them. They also, it also asked them to leave an email. And so when we went through the waitlist, we would be calling, leaving voicemails. We'd send text messages. We would send emails. We would try to attempt to reach them about three times over 10 days. If we never heard back from them, we would move their name from the active waitlist onto another list, which was just, we attempted to call, and if we ever hear back from them again, we can verify that they were on the list, and we immediately put them back at the top, and then we get them in as soon as we can. So over two years, we got through about 480 people. As we're sunsetting right now, there's still about 540, 550 people left on the waitlist. I'm going to imagine there's some duplicate names on that, but it's still a long list of people that are still there that claim to be homeless within the city of Antioch. One of the big things I want to talk about is flex funds. And so this was kind of a general slush fund that we could use to help people move into employment and then into housing. And so one of the And so one of the mandates that we had was to manage it and we used it in one of five ways. We would help people gain employment and that could come across as as simple as buying them a nice button-up shirt for an interview. Or maybe it was steel-toed boots to go work at UPS or Amazon or something to that. Or maybe it was fingerprints to do a background check that could then lead into employment. Second way we would use flex funds is for move-in costs. So almost all property managers required, we could skip this one. Go ahead. We're cutting this one a little bit short. Go ahead. There we go, flex funds. Move-in costs. So most property managers would require, you know, first month rents as well as a security deposit, which would, which would match first month's rent. And so we would pay for that. And then we would also purchase furniture because most people didn't have any furniture. And so we worked with a local furniture store out of Antioch to provide a bed, a dresser and a nightstand for everybody. That was generally about $1,200. We would then also use the flex funds to purchase household essentials. This was usually about $300 to $500 per person. And this would be able to get them pots and pans and bedding and pillows and silverware. So that as they went into their new place, they would actually have things to use within it. And then the last thing we used the flex funds for was what we call titration. And that is just support with their rent. So not only did we pay for the first month move-in cost, but then we would stay with them for several months. Usually it was between three and six months, depending on where the funding was at. And from there, we would pay a certain percentage of whatever their rent was. And so typically on a six-month help, we would, we would do like 100% on the first month, then 80%, 60%, 40%, 20%, 10%, slowly wean them off so that they would have time in their own income to pay for whatever other needs that they wanted for themselves. So if they wanted electrics, you know, TVs, things like that, great, they could buy it for themselves because that wasn't something that we would purchase for them. So the hard part with this is just the market rate for housing. And we don't have special connections that gives discount. We don't have housing vouchers or anything. So we're looking at market rate. And what we are finding over the last two years is that if somebody wants to rent a bedroom in a shared house, the typical cost for that is anywhere between $1,000 and $1,300 for their own bedroom.
If I could chime in on that too. I think that one of the things we really have to recognize is that there were no set aside subsidies or housing subsidies of any sort for Opportunity Village. We had no connection to anything that the county was offering. We were leveraging our own resources and our landlord liaison resources. So one of the things we did was we brought in our own team members that were not covered in the budget to be able to help provide and leverage the resources that we needed. So as the budget helped us fund for 10 people, we brought in like 13 to 14 people or three to four extra people that were part of our own BACS teams to help leverage what, what the budget wasn't covering. On average, I want to say that 1.25 million a year, I know it's a lot of money, but when doing interim housing at this level and this, this type of project, it typically costs around 2.5 to 2.7 million per year for a project like this. And we were running it like on skin and bones and doing our best to still provide like as many, like as many outcomes as we could. But yeah, so I'll get back to, I'll yield that time back to you.
It's all good. It's all good. So we could go to the next one. So this is just furniture, then households, things that we buy, cunning boards, bowls, things like that. Titration plans, you can see up there, if we did six months, that's what it would look like. Three months, that's what it could look like. And then, so let's just say we were to house somebody and they could get into their own place for $1,500. This is what it would look like for that person. So we would double their move-in costs. So 1,500 rent plus security deposit would be about $3,000. We'd get them furniture, some household essentials. And then we'd do that prorated titration through six months. And what you could see for this individual would be just under $8,000. So that's what we were doing to support everybody with the flex funds that we had to get them into a place and get them stable, get them connected into their community and get them all the wraparound services they could so that they felt good and felt like they could then sustain themselves. We would then stay with each individual for whatever their titration was, whether it was six months. We would continue to check in on them, make sure they were doing okay, make sure they were connected to all their wraparound care, healthcare services, things like that. And for the most part, everybody stayed good, but if they weren't, we would hear about it. And then we could step in and help them and do what we could to help stabilize their living situations again. We go to the next one. We did last fall ask for extra funding. And as Gary said, a lot of that was set up from the beginning of the contract where some of the needs, the financial needs to do this, weren't met. Some of that was as simple as the budget called for $4 person per meal. And we just couldn't find any place to give us a meal for $4 per person.
Yeah, I think what happened too is that when we originally went for the product, for the quotes for the project, we had that. And then there was this massive increase across the board where inflation was hitting everyone. And so I think as of right now, like meals per person is about $7.25. It can cost us around $9,000 a month. And if you multiply that by 12, you know, we're spending 107,000 dollars a year just on food alone. So yeah.
So just kind of a quick summary of our outcomes. Over the two years, we ended up serving 155 people and that was broken between 80 women and 75 men. We did keep track of their ages for you. And so as we called people on the waitlist, we wanted to make sure that the site would have a little bit of variable in the ages. And so if we had a T list, we also had just adults. And then we had a senior list of 55 and older. And you can see based on those, those are the number of peoples from each age group that ended up joining the program. And then the average length of stay was roughly 133 days per person. And we ended up working with a number of other services in the area, especially the Community Outreach Center when it was open and active. Also, the Contra Costa County Health Band would come on Tuesdays. And then there was a lot of other partnerships with food donations that would come once or twice a week and donate food to us that we would then pass along.
Yeah, shout out to Team Jesus. They came through a lot with a lot of different foods for it. So yeah. Also shout out to Loaves and Fishes. They, the first year, they really did work with us on the budget because we were telling them that we can't afford it. And they gave us a very, they gave us meals at like $4 or $5. And then this year, they were like, they just can't do it. Like they couldn't absorb the cost themselves. So like I said, it's at 7.25 right now. But those relationships came in clutch. I think I also want to mention the executive in owner, Summer and Joty. They were awesome in their property management, making sure that if anything was ever damaged or needed fixing or repair or daily maintenance was taken care of on a daily basis. So shout out to Summer and Joty for maintaining a clean environment for the property.
So we did have 126 people. 126 people that we exited into stable or permanent housing. 78 of those went into their own rental that we supported with titration. 29 returned to family. 17 returned to friends. Two found their own temporary. We did have four people that we just transferred over to Delta Landing. As we're sunsetting, we just didn't feel we had enough time to find them the housing that they need. And Contra Costa County Homeless Services was willing to take them on.
So we leveraged our relationships with Tasha, meeting with the Contra Costa County and saying, hey, we have some people that were, as we close this site up, they're going to need a place to go. And Contra Costa graciously provided an assessment for those individuals. And then we're able to open up a few beds at Delta Landing. That, we're the provider for that site too as well, but they are the referrers for it. And pretty much make sure that everyone leaving, there's no one at Delta Landing that won't have a place to go. From Opportunity Village, sorry. No one from, no one from Opportunity Village.
Can you repeat the number of folks that needed to be exited to Delta Landing again?
Four. Yeah, so that, that would be, I think with them, we, we just secured the last spot for the last person at Delta Landing so that everybody. So just as of right now, 100% of the people that were at, at Opportunity Village have a place to go.
We go to the next slide here. We did have a couple of unique exits. A lot of this was just people that were injured onsite or one person decided to enter into a substance abuse treatment center. So those are kind of unique. Couple of long, one went to a long-term care facility, another went to a hospital for serious injury. And then we did have some negative exits as well too, which I think is the next slide. Some of the negative exits, we try to be as honest as possible with the information that we have. And if people abandoned their room and we know that they came from encampment and it's likely that they returned to an encampment, we mark that as a negative self-exit. Seven were exited for either physical violence or threats of physical violence. Four were exited for safety issues around either the damage to the room or hoarding or something to that effect. And we had three that were exited for safety issues surrounding substance abuse issues. And that could be as simple as they kept taking the battery out of their smoke detector. And that then becomes a safety issue for everybody else if they're using open flames and substance abuse.
Which, we had a fire onsite, so we had to really make sure that we were implementing certain rules and guidelines and expectations. Otherwise, we're very low barrier. We're not trying to kick anybody out. Though we did have some learning experiences. We don't pretend that we put everyone in permanent housing situations. That's why we define it as permanent housing or more stable. Because there were situations where people were going into more stable housing, which would be like maybe a room. Maybe they were renting a room or maybe they were going back to a family member. And we can help leverage some resources to, to, to help with that reunification process. But we're not going to pretend that we provided great solutions for everybody. We provided whatever solutions we can according to people's circumstances at best that we could to help them get into something that's more stable than an emergency shelter.
That's our presentation.
All right, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
I have one speaker card from Melissa Case.
So I actually got to tour Opportunity Village with Darryl. He did a great job. I did so because I kept hearing all rumors about mold and stuff like that. And I wanted to just see for myself to dispel any gossip or whatever. But, and I shared my insights with Darryl. And I wanted to highlight some areas for improvement and clarity. And I think they already did some from my last visit. Optimizing the intake process, when I went, I was told there was no waiting list or there was a waiting list, but it wasn't in order. And it served the people with the most highest needs, which I felt was kind of backwards because we had a certain amount of dollars and I wanted to help, you know, as many people as possible so that people with the least amount of needs should be prioritized so we can get as many people through as possible. That would be like my area for improvement. Not, I know everybody needs help. I would just like tax dollars, most people as possible. The clarification on the waitlist, so that was handled today. That was my other comment. I also think there should be a life coaching, to make this better, a life coaching component. Because I feel like that would just be better, like many need guidance in developing routines and skills to successfully adapt from, you know, houseless life to stable housing. And when I asked Darryl about if there was any accountability or coaching, he's like, kind of. And one of my other things was define success in housing, which he just clarified tonight. Because I, I don't really consider success like a shared room. Maybe a single room I would, but some people were going into shared rooms with strangers and I wouldn't consider that success, I guess. I also think there should be more community engagement through success stories. He shared with me one really nice success stories where he got someone into a union job and they went through training. It was amazing. And then I saw two more success stories. Thank you, Mary. So if I could get some time back. So sharing more positive outcomes, I think that would increase community engagement. I just think positive outcomes are a good thing to share with the community for community engagement. Expanded community support initiatives such as fundraiser, business attire drives and an Amazon wishlist to help supply this. And rethinking tiered rent payments, partnering with, so we don't, that was the most expenditure was the tiered rent payments if we could partner with Section 8 or something.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Andrew Becker.
Thank you. Mary's our hero tonight. Thank you. You know, housing, right, when we talk about housing, I, I feel like there's so many different levels, right? And how do they connect, right? We talk about affordable housing needs. We talk about shelter housing, interim housing, transitional housing. Every year, there's a new definition. California's Health and Safety Code, right? And you know, my frustration is that everything in this city seems to happen in a bubble, in its own bubble. As we sit here talking about interim housing and these individuals exiting, right? And the needs there, literally today, the state of California opened up Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities program, $775 million. Literally today, I read about a project, Hillcrest Summit, over by the 711, 160, on Hillcrest, 165 units, 100% affordable. So we know that there is an interest in affordable housing in this area. We know that there are stakeholders. We know that there are partners that can manage programs here. Everybody gets so caught up in the numbers and the outcomes for specific programs or projects that it event, it eventually becomes such a strong conversation topic. You know, that what a lot of people will probably get out of this meeting is, we're buying people pots and pans, right? And I don't think what people understand is that these are individuals that have nothing. And then when I say nothing, I don't mean physical items. I mean, nothing. Plans, support. That's what we're providing people. It's the structure that people need to elevate. And while these programs all hold a fiscal responsibility, because the taxpayer can only carry such a burden. And we know that there are great needs here in the city. My question is, when do we move these conversations out of these sterile back and forth governmental spaces? And do we bring them out into the community and put people together at a table and say, work together and find solutions holistically that support these people? Because I have so much more to say, but I have 16 seconds left to say it. So I'll leave you with, what happens to the community when these programs go away? Both in dollars and in spirit. Thank you.
Leslie May, or I'm sorry, Nicole.
So hello again. Thank you so much for the presentation. I think one of the best days, outside of, you know, having my kids and all that, of my life, was actually being there to cut the ribbon when we opened Opportunity Village. It was a long fight. It took so much time and so many years to get that program up and running. And, you know, a lot of people were complaining, oh, it's only 30 people. Like, you must not know 30 people on the streets. If we talk about the, what is it, 450, I think the point in time count is right now, folks that we have and they are averaging 60 people a year that they can help. I mean, that's a lot of people if you know 60 people that are on the streets and struggling every day. So I just want to thank you all. I had my, some issues with, with the program. I think Melissa mentioned, like kind of helping people when they get out of the program. I think Melissa mentioned, like, kind of helping people when they get out of the program to make sure that they're, that they're okay. And I think that was a great idea that she had to, I think we talked about it, to kind of have, you know, people come in and teach them like life skills and things like that. Like, people don't know how to budget their money, because they have been on the streets for so long, and they're just like, what do I do, I get my social security check? You know, so I think things like that, and just life skills and things like that, like sessions or making, making sure that people do that while they're in the program is a great thing. But, for the most part, I think what I learned, for me, with your presentation was that, because I was complaining, a friend of mine had got out of the program, and he was like, I'm struggling, he got a job. And, but he was struggling like with the rent and stuff like that. But I think what I failed to realize, and what I'm so appreciative of you doing the presentation, was that they literally did the best that they can with everybody. Everybody is at a different level, you know, they don't have all the funds to put people in, 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 like he said, housing, the cost of housing, the cost to just rent a room is just ridiculous. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate all that you guys have done. I've had so many people say that they, you know, they're doing really well right now, they're off the streets. I mean, and they're still off the streets, like, it's been a year now. And so I really, really appreciate that, because, you know, I love, I love my friends on the streets, I'm just always praying for them, and this program was so amazing, and you guys did a great job. So thank you so much.
Ashley?
Hello, Mayor Bernal. I just wanted to add to Bax's presentation, as a former heat team member in Oakland. And I just wanted to speak to Melissa as well, so people understand that case management is a big part of what Bax offers. So as we were talking, about what happens in the future for people once they get out of the program, that's case management, and that's follow-through, to make sure that they have the ability to attend programs that teach them about budgeting. I used a program in Pittsburgh, or, so people learn to reintegrate into society. So, that follow-through is there, that's what social workers are for. I don't think life coach is the appropriate word, but people that have actually gone to college with a license as a social worker. And that's what they do, is case management for homeless people, or people that are new into housing. I think that we've done a great job here, and as my face is familiar to some of you, I think we've come a long way. We've set an example to other cities on what can be done, and Bax filled this role perfectly. And if anything, they made us look great. And, and I hope that everybody who doesn't understand the process of housing, people that have been chronically homeless is not easy. And so, like Andrew said, pots and pans, that is what some people are going to think. But it's so much more than that, and you have to give people a foundation to start. And if they have a shared bedroom, that's a win, because it's a roof over their head. And for some, it's a progress. It goes from a shared room to a private room, to a studio, to one day, having a family in your house again. So it's bringing people, restoring them. So, I just want to say thank you, you're appreciated, and all your work is gone unnoticed, so, thank you.
Leslie May?
Thank you very much, Bax, for that presentation. I just, you know, want to remind everybody, we've been hearing about all these unhoused, and these people are doing this, and they make our streets nasty and dirty, we hear all kinds of stuff. I think people forgot they're actually, those are human beings too. A lot of them, yes, there are a lot of them that are substance abusers, DSM-5 TRS, that's a mental illness, so they put it on it there. Other ones really have a, a diagnosis of schizophrenia, bipolar schizophrenia, all kinds of things. So, the family members may have gotten to the age that they're older, the parents, you know, late 60s, 70s, they can't manage the kid anymore. So, the kid goes to the hospital, they call the hospital, calls the parents, can they come back there? No, because maybe that person, he or she, has beaten, you know, and harmed family members, because that happens a lot. I just say, we had a program here. We had a program that was working. We even needed to expand the program, that was taking people off the streets. That was taking people and trying to rehabilitate people, and get them not just a roof over their head, but their health care, their physical health care, their dental care, because bad teeth will kill a person before anything else. So, they did what they could. They provided them, I'm sure they provided clothing, because I donated clothing. And I had other people that donated clothing. I wished I had been in contact with them, and so I kind of feel guilty, because when they got ready to leave, they could have utilized Season of Sharing, Once-in-a-Lifetime Program, where these people come in, they buy everything anybody could possibly want and need to furnish their place, including electronics, TVs, not just one DVD, everything, the pots and pans and everything. And so that's why they call it Once-in-a-Lifetime Program. So hopefully, in the future, they can use that. But I just don't see how we can go to sleep at night in our nice warm homes, you know, take a shower, eat, watch TV till we get, till our eyes are closed, and the TV is watching us. And I think about these other people. So what's going to happen, those people that were off the streets? What's going to happen in Antioch now? Where they're going to be, some of them in transition, but there's even more that are coming here. I mean, we have a lot of out-of-towners that come here. So what are we going to do with them? We need housing, we should have funded this. Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions?
Hi. Well, thank you for your presentation and, and hard work. So, when this pilot was initially implemented, how many individuals were you set to serve?
So the, the expectation was 100 people.
100?
And we served 155.
The initial was 100, you served 155.
That was 55 people on Bax.
And, right, and then you just said that you have a waiting list, that there's still an existing waiting list?
Yeah.
Of 535 individuals, some of those might be duplicated, because you haven't like, went through the data yet. So, it could, it could be duplicated numbers, but there's still a high need that obviously this project couldn't meet with the, with the timeline available?
Yeah, and the space.
And, and the space, okay. You, when you said negative exits, I kind of like, language matters to me, I think like, given that, you know, people suffering from substance, substance dependency issues, mental health issues, potentially could be experienced violence, people living in reasonable conditions, but not still where they want to be, could also facilitate some of that, and extra access to, to different kinds of resources. So, I think like, what do you can, when you say somebody was unsuccessful, it could be, like, you stated that it was for other reasons, but I just feel some kind of way about like, is that just language that you use as a negative? Is that a part of your structure to say negative?
I guess the, it's kind of HUD language. So, I mean, the way that we talk about it at Bax is that we often will say things like, that there is an acuity level that needed a higher level of care.
Thank you. Next time, well, not again, because this lease is up.
The lease is up on April 23rd.
Right. So we, we're making recommendations for, we're making recommendations for improvements to a program that's going away. Yep, yep, that's what's happening. So, the other thing is, when you say that there were self-exits, and then like, people who just abandoned the room, people who abandoned the room, did they ever return? And then my, my follow-up question to that is, people who self-exited on their own, did they agree to do any kind of interviews, to let you know why they were leaving?
So, it was, there's always a myriad of reasons, right? And so, some people would disappear, and you'd call them up, and you'd be like, finally get in touch with them, like, hey, I just want to check in with you, we've noticed you haven't been in your room for a week, what's going on? And it could be anything from, literally, one lady said, oh yeah, I'm in New York, I'm on vacation. And you're like, oh, okay, like, you didn't tell anybody, like, what's going on in New York, you know? And it's a family reunion of some kind. Somebody else is like, yeah, I just decided I wanted to go back to my mom's house. It could be anything in between, and you, and you just never know the reasons why. Sometimes you never get in touch with the person, but you just know, like, they're not there, and you're not going to hold the bed forever. And so, we bag their things, and hope they return to get it, and we can have that conversation, you know, at some point.
Helping people find rooms to rent, because we did hear, like, from some speakers, you know, people are spending money to rent a room, but I know people who are renting a room in San Francisco for $2,000 a month, right? So it's like,
In Alameda County, it's like 1,700 or 1,800 a month for a renting room.
Just to rent a room. Would you say that this population is either low income, very low income, or no income?
Yes. I, I, I think that,
So, when we say, when people say, you should be helping people access affordable housing, affordable would mean that you would have to have the income to meet the standard of affordability in the area where you're trying to rent?
Of a fair market rate.
A fair, fair market rate. So, this population is low income, very low income, or extremely low income. This, you said the project was funded at 1.6 million a year for two years?
It was like, it was originally like 1.26, yeah. It was 2.5, 2.56 was the original, around there.
2.56.
Yeah.
Okay, and just for clarifications for the public, none of that funding was general fund?
No, I believe that it was ARPA.
It was all ARPA funding, so none of the,
Even the 800,000 that we requested.
Even the additional 800,000 requests for equity raises around staff, none of those funds were general funds.
None of them came, from my knowledge, none of them came from the general funds.
Yeah, so this, this, just, for, just, just for the public, again, this was not funded through general fund dollars, this was funded through ARPA dollars. So when we talk about where we want to invest our tax dollars, very little, if any, went into this project out of the general fund. How, well, I don't have, I mean, thank you, it's over, but, I mean, I don't know if there are any conversations that's being had between you all in the county or other folks. I know that because the city actually invested, our America Rescue Plan Act funding into this pilot program, it also set the city up to receive $6 million in encampment resolution funds. And so when you, when you invest in models like Housing First models, which initially people are against, because they think it's a hand down, a handout rather than a hand up, and it also have a lot to do with worthiness, who do we think is worthy of shelter?
That's the traditional view on it.
Right, but because this city used its ARPA dollars, a little over 2 million of its ARPA dollars, to put this pilot in place to show some need in the city of Antioch, we were able to secure encampment resolution funding to the tune of $6 million. Where currently, the city is in partnership with the county, discussing to move forward further projects for unhoused folks, as well as the city manager is establishing a task force to address issues for homelessness. And if you all weren't here to steward, steward this innovative idea for a city like Antioch, we wouldn't have been set up to receive those funds and have these relationships. So I just, I, there could be a lot of complaints, and there always will be, but just wanted to thank you all for your, your work, your hard work.
Thank you. And if I could just say something, that city of Antioch, you have now, before you proof of concept, you have your, all of our data that we submitted. It's called the, an APR, annual, an annual progress report. So, you have the model, you have the costs. If you want buy-in from the community, you have something that you can go off of with numbers that tell you, like, relatively, how many people can be served, and, and what it, what it will look like for future programs, if you have in mind, I am aware of ERF, and we have had conversations with the county around encampment resolution funds, and how we can support the county with making sure that we use those dollars for also assisting in kind of interim shelter or rapid rehousing as well.
Well, I don't, I don't have any more questions for you, but I kind of want to throw this out here for city staff, and maybe for the council to consider, since we just got the report from the Measure W Sales Tax Commission. If we look at the presentation under code enforcement, it said the largest expenses, not including personnel, one of those expenses were nuisance abatement, is 78,383.81. I guess my question would be, how, how much of that nuisance abatement was unhoused encampments? There was also, there were also crime stats, or calls for service presented as well by the Measure W Committee for the top 10 complaint types. And I will wonder, how many of those, out of those 213 loitering complaints were unhoused folks? Out of the 262 complaints for mental health incidents were unhoused folks, how many of the 397 complaints for public nuisance were also unhoused folks? And out of the additional to the residents' call for service under quality of life, how many of the 17,358 calls for service were related to unhoused folks? I think these are also questions, well, not to you all, but obviously, these are questions that I think this council need to consider as we have this program sunsetting. And we also do not, we, like, I have asked, how much are we spending annually? And residents have asked this already, to sweep people off the streets, sweep people out of encampments, and actually not provide anybody any quality services? And so you often save money when you invest, rather than continuing to do the same thing you've always done, and getting the same result.
Yeah, because when you criminalize it, you're spending more money with the justice involved system, and on overall, per capita, per person, you're spending way more on the long end versus investing. So as a city council, that's something, that's why I'm talking about this proof of concept, is being able to see, and, and maybe get some, some data or numbers of how much is, how much are you spending on the revolving door of people in and out of services, emergency services, or, you know, being picked up by the police, like 78,000, like you just quoted, like, how much are we spending per person, over and over again, versus investing in programs that would keep them off the streets or rehabilitate?
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you both, very much. All right, moving on to public comment. Yeah, moving on to public comment, or moving back to public comment? I'm sorry? Okay. We will take public comment till 9:30. What, what, how many do we have?
We currently have four speaker cards.
Four speaker, okay, three minutes each then.
Would you like me to read off the speaker rules?
No, no, we're, we're fine.
Okay. Okay, the first speaker is Ebony, followed by Debbie and Kimberly.
Okay, I'm on popcorn time. Go as fast as I can. Hi, you guys. I am here in requesting that the, that Antioch input a leak adjustment for the water. I am a tenant, and I have, I have been instructed Uh, I am a tenant and, um, I have, I have been instructed from the wonderful staff, they, they were the ones who had informed me during the two years that I have been, um, a resident here, that the property had a leak before I moved there. And, but I was instructed for the past, I want to say on or about six months, not to pay anything. And my bill had went up to, um, well over $2,400 then after. So all that sounded great, low, don't pay. And so I went, as I went back and, and I requ, I had, I had asked them, excuse me, bear with me. I'd asked them what, um, what is, is, was, is there a leak allowance? So after, you know, after the wait and because they wanted the repairs to be made before I would make a payment. And they said, no, I was devastated. So, um, I never had to pay a deposit up until being put into this financial position, which put me in a, a financial hardship. Last month I had to pay $1,500. My children called, um, and said, Mom, the water is off. Um, very devastated, I had to pay additional $150, $54 for same day for it to be restored. Additional $105 for the water being turned off. I only asked that if the, if the, if it cannot be a leak adjustment in some form of a reimbursement because of all the leaks that had to be repaired. I'm sure that was a hardship on that slum lord that took two years to take, take accountability. But it really financially hurt our family if not to keep the water in the owner's name if they want to rent. And, um, I'm going to say this really, really fast. I called the police, um, my family was assaulted. No, um, no report was ever made. Our, um, it's really hard to find, um, housing. I'm a mom of 10. Um, it broke up our family, still no support, assaulted two times. Unfortunately, the family, um, the mom suffered from some form of dementia. So, you know, some s- form of support. And on top of that, I'm sorry, if I could just, okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Debbie, followed by Kimberly and Gavin.
Hi, Mayor, Council, staff and community. Um, many of you know me, um, that I've spoke at the council before about our business group. There's a downtown business association that is starting up, the Downtown Antioch Association. And we've had quite success and some energy around new businesses. So we would like to continue that and we would like to ask the support of the community as well. Because being a business downtown for 12 years and the new businesses that are just starting out, need your support. So if you could shop local, if you could come to see us, and also if you could join us, there's a meeting tomorrow night at Smith Landing at 5:30. And we'd like residents, businesses, um, um, home-based nonprofits to join us and support. It's not, um, a business unit in itself. It will support the Chamber, the Celebrate Antioch, the other groups in town, work with the city, work with the police department. We have some meat to this meeting. I think the police force is talking during this meeting and some other experts on the, on forming a group as this. So please come and join us. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kimberly, followed by Gavin Payton and Ronald.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and everybody else. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, first, and I think I have spoke with Monica about this offline before, because they opened the new Costco right there at Herodan Ranch and Pruitt Ranch, and they've made two turning lanes out of that, that used to be one lane. Is there going to be a light put up there? Because it's almost impossible for us to get out sometimes of the day because there's so much traffic coming from the Sand Creek, um, street, going down that way to get to the Costco. So is there going to be a light put there? That's the first thing. And then the homelessness, because the Chick-fil-A is getting ready to open. I see all the boxes and stuff where they're doing it. They've moved the homeless or the unhoused people from that walkway where they were behind the Chick-fil-A. And they've moved right there under the underpass on both sides of the street. So I've heard, um, everyone saying how we're paying to move them from place to place. What about the tiny homes? And there's so much land out here and the $6 million I've been coming to the council meeting or however much it was that we got from the state for the homeless? Why don't we build a tiny home community or something? So they're not just pushed from place to place or from Antioch over here to Brentwood over here and then back to Antioch over here? It just doesn't make any sense and money wasted. This, the light. Oh, this is my last thing and I probably should have talked to the acting chief of police, but I didn't see him. I've made a noise complaint on a neighbor of mine that have parties to 3 o'clock in the morning and I have to get up and go to work in the morning. And when I called the dispatcher two times, it was the same lady, no help. The third time I got sounded like an older man and he said, okay, you need to make a formal complaint and an officer will see you or call you or something. And I did that several times and have yet to hear from anyone. And that's it.
Next speaker is Gavin, followed by Ronald and Milan.
Good evening. It's so nice to see everybody again. How y'all doing? Y'all doing good? Okay, let's now get back down to business. So first off, um, can we address about youth and the expulsion rate? And how I wanted to see more change in that? Um, also, I would love it if the city council of Antioch does reach out to the youth council because there are some questions that the youth brought up in our meetings. We're referring to the Police Oversight Commission and to some of the ordinances because we wasn't included in that. Also, we would also love to let you know that, um, we are proud to sponsor John, this John Burris screening at Delta Bay Church. And we invite you guys to come, I forgot the time. But, um, if I have the flyer, I'll probably send it to you guys. Um, and then also, there needs to be a change across the county, but it can only start if it happens here, not only with the homeless rate, but also with youth feeling like they don't have a place to go. Because also, when we talk about youth funding and youth fundraising, youth need like a stability place. They cannot be out here homeless, these college students can't be living out in their cars. Also, we need to address how the African-American Holister Wellness Hub and the county, we need to be holding them accountable because they don't want it here in Antioch and here in Pittsburgh because that's absolutely where it's needed most. So we all need to start act, acting like we care because it is mostly important for us to care about these issues. And we need to start doing it now, more than ever. Because if we do not, we are going to be set back and it's going to falsely rely on you and it's going to set you guys back, it's going to set us back. Because when you set us back, that sets everyone else back. So, I am also wanted to give, um, a nice applause to, um, a couple of people out here. I would like to say thank you, um, Ms. Nicole that's sitting behind me for always speaking out about homeless. I want to give a shout out to Port, Ms. Portia for standing up and, and, um, Mr. Devin Williams for speaking up on issues for the Police Oversight Commission. And also, I would love to also thank the youth that came out the last meeting because I definitely do, they believe, need to be in the conversations again. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ronald, followed by Milan.
Greetings, uh, Mayor Burnell, um, Ms. Walker in absent, Ms. Wilkins, Mr. Rosebuck and my, uh, councilperson, uh, Mr. Freitas. Two things. I came to the special meeting last, uh, last week, the police special meeting. And I live on Blue Rock and, and so the whole Blue Rock area. And going up to my house is from Deer Valley and Blue Rock and then it circles all the way around to Carpentina. And we pretty much know each other. I've been to every house on that Blue Rock to Carpentina. It's a pretty self-sufficient neighborhood. Everybody knows everybody. We've had a couple of, uh, thefts in the past, but we handled them ourselves in that area. Last week, you guys talked about the neighborhood, what is it, neighborhood crime prevention? We would hope that that would be readdressed. That was a very strong, strong suitor. The police are really stretched real thin. And I think that if that could be back in place, we could do some things ourselves and alleviate some of the pressure. That was one. Two is that, uh, I don't, it's not a knock to who's ever over, uh, the economic development. But it's very difficult to find someone to be able to help you to forge a way in this city. I am tired of being on the freeway. I, I have a penny or two, so we're, we're looking to plant a flag here, but it's hard to find help. So I don't know who's the department head of economic development. But that little fella or a little young lady needs to, uh, make themselves known. Thank you.
The last speaker card I have is for Milan.
Sorry. Good evening, sorry. Hello and good evening, Mayor Burnell, Council and City of Antioch. My name is Milan Reed and I am a part of the Antioch Council of Teens. ACT is a youth group that gathers every second and fourth Wednesday of every month from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Antioch Community Center. If you would like to join, you can email youth@antiochcalifornia.gov. The Youth Services Network is having our teen movie night tomorrow, March 26th, with two showtimes starting at 4:30 PM and 6:15 PM at the Maya Cinema. It is completely free for youth ages 12 to 18 and we already have a large number of registered participants. While this event is already packed, keep an eye out for more opportunities like this. Our goal is to continue creating fun, safe spaces where youth can connect, enjoy themselves and be a part of positive community experiences. In the month of April, ACT will have an autism awareness campaign on April 9th from 4:30 PM to 6 o'clock PM. We are gathering at the picnic area located at the Antioch Water Park. We will then walk to the main street on Lone Tree Way to cheer and encourage Cars to Hunk in support of Autism Awareness Month. We invite you all to join us in this fan, fun campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, Milan.
Nicole?
Okay, uh, yeah, good evening again. So, um, I must say, the last city, or the last time I was here at the city council meeting, I was, um, I have to be honest, your comments, Mayor, just irritated me. I mean, I thought about it for the last couple of weeks off and on, just like, what in the hell, heck? Uh, so I was irritated by the way that I felt that you, to me, it felt like you were saying, making excuse, uh, for why our police department code enforcement, the city is criminalizing homelessness and doing these sweeps. When you said and you mentioned that Amtrak is giving us a hard time, the first thing I thought was, well, damn, weren't you responsible for us not having our Amtrak station in the first place? Because of when you were city manager, you know, that, that was, in my opinion, that was your fault. So blaming the unhoused for that, I thought was ridiculous and that was just terrible. Also, what really irritated me was when you said that the governor is basically forcing us to do this. So my thing is, and I know, um, um, councilman or, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rocha, that you've also done this as well. I was so proud of my city when the federal government came down and said, we are not going to do, when they were saying that what they wanted to do to undocumented workers. And, and you've talked to APD and you've gone to meetings and things, or not workers, but undocumented individuals and families that have been out here. And we said, we're not going to criminalize them, we're not going to treat them unfairly, we're not going to. And I will stand right there with you to advocate for that. Because I don't believe in the unfair treatment or inhumane treatment for any citizen living here in Antioch. But, uh, so I don't understand why we could do that for them, but we can't do that for our veterans that are literally living on our streets. Why can't APD, why can't our city take the moral ground and say, just like we did for our, um, our undocumented citizens that are living here on the streets? Why can't we say we're not doing that for poor people? Why can't we say that we're not doing that for our veterans that are on our streets? Why can't we say that we're not doing that for the seniors that are on our streets? For the disabled people that are on our streets? For the youth and the kids that have gotten out of the foster system and that have aged out? Why can't we say we're not doing that for them? Why can't we say we're not doing that for our young women that are on our streets? I don't know how many women have told me that they have been raped or sexually assaulted on our streets. Why can't we do that for them? And I'm not saying one or the other, I think everyone needs to be treated equally. So I don't know exactly why that excuse was made. To me, it seems like it could be because of the new businesses that we're putting down, downtown in the city we want to get. I would just hope, just like, I don't, I can't stand Donald Trump, but at least he honest. At least he will sit up in our face and tell us exactly what he's going to do. So if you want to criminalize homelessness, say it. And your friend Sean McCauley, the one that, the millionaire with all the businesses that says that we don't, that, oh, you're the advocate that, uh, is fighting for the criminal homeless? You guys are all doing this.
Thank you.
It's not right.
Cassandra?
Hi, good evening, Cassandra Quinto Collins, Angela Quinto's mother. Well, I'm just going to say what I said last week. Just want to take this opportunity to, um, to reiterate the importance of public, of community safety resources like the Angela Quinto Crisis Response Team and the BRC. The saying that comes to mind is that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Looking at healthcare, for example, nationally, we have seen shifts over time from focusing on treatment of symptoms to prioritizing prevention of illness. Thank you.
I don't have one, but for public comment.
Good evening, city council members. I, um, I'm going to stay talking about, I'm going to continue to talk about things that I find that are unfair and unjust and not transparent in this city. We've been talking about budgeting and I know Don Freitas, since he's, I guess he does accounting or whatever in his past. I have as well, um, I was forced into it by my dad when I was younger and so I just kept with it. But I look at all the papers, I am one of those people, I'm not a hoarder, but I do keep every single packet I receive at these meetings since I've been attending since 2019. And, and budgets, I like to look at that. I just want to say, we're going through it with the police department, their budget, and then I saw tonight, now, I don't believe in defunding the police, but I do believe in shifting money. And then I just found out about the shell game. So I know that the department's not supposed to be completely filled. I already know all the ins and outs of this. And I just feel like, instead of going through all this talking about, "Well, let's have them present this, let's have them present that," everybody's going to present your best side. I guess all you all remember when you went on your first date, you're going to show your best side, because you like that person. Well, that's the same with business, you're going to show your best side. But then when I find out all the ins and outs and all the little part, and I'm schooled on what's actually going on with this shell game, that you know about it because you taught someone else how to play it. So, and that's with the police department. I am saying, we have federal oversight, but I really believe that a lot of you don't believe fat meat is greasy and it's not good for you. Well, it is greasy, and I'm here to tell you it's not good for you. You get my age, you start having acid reflux. So, let's stop playing with these budgets that's going on with the police department. Pull money out of there, I've seen where money can be pulled out. I've seen where money's been paid for employees that weren't there for the last three, four years. But it was budgeted in the budget for these employees, for these positions. I, I know this. And anyone, even the people who are keyboard warriors, you know, I'm, everybody probably knows where I live, come by, knock on the door, stick a note on my door, Leslie, can you show me this stuff? Yeah, I'll show it to you, because I don't have anything to hide. But I, what I don't like is being gaslighted. And that's what this city is being gaslighted about this budget. Quit lying.
I do not have any more speaker cards.
All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is introduction of new city employees, promotions, and retirements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First speaker tonight is going to be our Public Works Director, Scott Munting.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I don't have my sheet with me, give me one second. I apologize for that. Tonight, I'm lucky to announce two people, one new hire and one promotion. First, Armando Sobreia joins us, Street Department, our abatement team as a general laborer. Armando brings valuable experience from his previous role as a crew lead at Brightview Landscape. Armando graduated from Pittsburgh High School in 2019. He enjoys off-roading, riding dirt bikes. Help me welcome Armando to the team.
I just want to say, thank you for the opportunity and being part of making the city look better. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Armando.
Next, Eric Strongman. Eric Strongman has been promoted to our Lead Facilities Maintenance Worker. Eric was initially hired in 2021 as a Facility Maintenance Worker 1, and worked his way up to, worked his way up to Maintenance Worker 2. Eric has ra, Eric was raised in Antioch, attended Antioch High School, and has a growing family of almost five, two boys and a girl on the way. Eric enjoys spending time with his family, bowling, karate with his son, and camping. He is excited for his growth here with the city and his new role. Congratulations, Eric.
Good evening, Council. Everyone, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity and this promotion. I want to give all my thanks to my loving wife and family, but also all the relationships I've cultivated and brought. Thanks to all the directors and everybody who's supported me, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right, next I'd like to invite Director Tasha Johnson of Public Safety and Community Resources.
Thank you, Mary, that's all I'm going to say. Dawn was born in Germany and grew up in Berkeley, California. After graduating from UC Berkeley in 2019 with a bachelor's degree in sociology, she worked in the restaurant industry where she saw lots of food waste and contamination in the compost and recycling streams. Dawn joined the City of Antioch team in 2021 as a Civic Spark Climate Resilience Fellow, working on the implementation of SB 1383 to increase food donations and composting in Antioch. After her fellowship ended, she continued to work for the city as a part-time employee until being hired full-time in her new capacity as Admin Analyst in the Environmental Sustainability and Resilience Division. Thank you, Dawn. In her free time, Dawn enjoys spending time with family and friends, hiking, and being in nature. Fun fact, Dawn grew up speaking German and Spanish as well as English, and I'll add, she brings great treats. So I'd like to welcome Dawn to the mic.
Thank you, Tasha. Good evening, Mayor, Council members, staff, and the community. I want to thank you for this job opportunity. Over these past few years, I've loved working in the Department of Public Safety and Community Resources because of how strongly we support each other, our, the passion we share for our work, and all the incredible programs and opportunities that we offer the community. I care deeply about protecting community and environmental health for our residents now and for a bright future for the next generations of Antioch. I have really enjoyed serving the Antioch community and look forward to continuing to serve the community. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, Dawn.
That includes the new employee intros for the evening.
All right, thank you very much, Brad. We have a proclamation honoring Cesar Chavez Day, March 31st, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation? Second? A motion in second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We have five affirmative votes, thank you. Whereas Cesar Estrada Chavez was born on March 31st, 1927, near Yuma, Arizona, and spent his early years on a family farm at the age of 10, joined the thousands of migrant farmworkers laboring in fields and vineyards throughout the Southwest after a bank foreclosure resulted in the loss of the family farm. Whereas Cesar Estrada Chavez left school to work full-time as a farmworker to help support his family, and at the age of 17, entered the United States Navy and served for two years, returning from service to marry Helen Fabela, whom he met while working in the vineyards of central California, and eventually had eight children. Whereas as early as 1949, Cesar was committed, committed to organizing farmworkers to campaign for safe and fair working conditions, reasonable wages, living housing, and the outlawing of child labor. In 1952, he joined the community service organization, a prominent Latino civil rights group. He worked with the organization to coordinate voter registration drives and conduct campaigns against discrimination in East Los Angeles, eventually serving as the National Director. Whereas in 1962, Cesar left the community service organization to found the National Farm Workers Association, which became the United Farm Workers of America, because he was a strong believer in the principles of nonviolence practiced by Mahatma Gandhi and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas Cesar effectively used peaceful tactics that included fasting for 25 days in 1968, 25 days in 1972, and 38 days in 1988 to call attention to the terrible working and living conditions of farmworkers in the United States, and organized thousands of migrant farmworkers to fight for fair wages, healthcare coverage, pension benefits, livable housing, and respect. Whereas his union's efforts brought about the passage of the landmark 1975 California Agricultural Labor Relations Act, which sought justice, guaranteed certain protections for farmworkers, and through his commitment to nonviolence, brought dignity and respect to the organized farmworkers. And whereas Cesar Estrada Chavez died on April 23rd, 1993, at the age of 66, in San Luis, Arizona, and was laid to rest at the headquarters of the United Farm Workers of America. Now therefore, I, Ron Burnell, Mayor of the City of Antioch, do hereby proclaim March 31st, 2025, as Cesar Chavez Day, and call on all of us to gather strength from Cesar Estrada Chavez's legacy and use of moral authority to push for a more equitable city, state, and society. Can I please have Paul Ramirez, if Paul's still here, come on up? All right, Paul's, Paul's here with United Latino Voices of Contra Costa County, so you can all join me down below, and after Paul says a few words, we can present him with the proclamation.
Thank you, and I want to give a big shout out to everybody here. You guys still awake? I want to thank, I want to thank Mulan, she's the one that just kicked and boosted me up. So, gave me a, gave me a little bit more, more joy here. I'm here with the United Latino Voices, this is Kita Quali Hector Gonzalez, this is Connie James Concepcion, and Mary Rocha. We are United Latino Voices of Contra Costa County, and we want to thank the Mayor, Ron Burnell, and the City Council for this great prestigious honor for Cesar Chavez. United Latino Voices, we help community countywide in health, education, and immigration, and specifically in terms of the Spanish-speaking communities. And we also, in terms of the life of Cesar Chavez, as we're coming into these days, in terms of his birthday, so you'll see more celebrations. And Cesar Chavez was a strong labor leader that took on agribusiness, the most powerful industry in the United States. And many told him, "You can't do that. You won't get anything done." And he told them, "We will win." And ULV has also taken on that challenge of helping our communities countywide. We currently have contracts with the Contra Costa Regional Medical Center, Kaiser Dabla Valley College, and our collaborations are countywide. We've worked with the Antioch Unified School District in the past in Brentwood, Pittsburgh, Concord, and Richmond. And like Cesar Chavez, ULV fights for those who do not have a voice. We fight for those who can't talk and advocate for themselves. Currently, we are really involved in immigration rights forums, and I want to thank the Catholic Church here in Antioch, along with the City of Antioch, and with United Latino Voices, we held Know Your Rights. And one of the things that we need to, to remember is that this is all about humanity. It's about humanity. The immigration problem that we're having was basically caused by us. Both Democrats and Republicans never got it right. But these are people. We fight for the immigrant community because they, this is about humanity. And these are not, as some people suggest, weeds that grew up and sprouted. We don't know how, you do know how. And you cannot think you can pull them like weeds. These are human beings. It's about humanity. It's about the children who have to hear the stress and anxiety in their parents' voices. So as we start again, we want to let you know that we stand with Cesar Chavez, we stand with his moral, his moral compass, which was about humanity. He also said it wasn't about the grapes during the strike, it was about the people. And I was born in Brentwood 74 years ago, family of farmworkers. I worked in the fields. And what's interesting is that I worked in the fields picking tomatoes and all of that. And my last job I had was a, I was a federal investigator with the US Department of Labor Wage Hour Division. That meant I went back to the fields to investigate the growers and the farmers, to make sure they were paying the people right. And so, I know for a fact that we need to continue that legacy. I just also want to announce that we have a rally in March. If you feel like marching, March 29th, City Hall in Pittsburgh, and we'll march half a mile, and then we'll have a great program, that's March 29th. On April 11th, we will have our Los Madas College Cesar Chavez Awards. We, and one of the awardees is an Antioch High School student who's getting an Emerging Leader Award, Morelia Gil Cubillo. And so again, we want to thank the City of Antioch for standing with us. We want to thank the City of Antioch having the heart to know that our immigrant community is our community. And so again, I want to thank you for that and for the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to, Paul, we're going to head on, head on down there and present this to you. Yeah, do we have any public comment on that item?
Andrew Becker.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to say that this proclamation does sadden me. Because as we sit here, understanding all of the great individuals in this country that have worked so hard to bring opportunities to a community, I wonder, how can a community turn back and, and help its individuals? And I wonder if anybody knows about the multifamily supernova that was released from the state of California for housing development for our low-income community? And I wonder if anybody knows that within that program, there is the Joe Serna Jr. Farm Worker Housing Program that provides $120 million to develop affordable housing? And I wonder if anybody knows that that program this year closes April 15th, 21 days from now? I wonder if anybody knows that that program also provides $33.7 million for homeownership opportunities for our low-income farmworkers out there in this community? And I wonder if anybody knows that that program closed 12 days ago? $187 million, I'm sorry, $153.7 million.
I do not have any other speaker forums.
All right, council comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the proclamation. And as I think about this, as an Afro-Latina, one of the things I want to raise up is, when we honor Cesar Chavez and the farmworkers, we can't forget that the farmworkers movement also worked with the Black Panthers.
Yes, they did.
The farmworkers and Black Panthers got together, protested grocers, ran food programs in their communities, and advocated to feed and teach their communities while keeping their dollars in their communities. This was a time of unity of Black and Brown communities, a pushback against government threats rooted in anti-Blackness and division of movements. We have never recovered from those threats. Black and Brown unity has never been the same. Could we go back to the days of the farmworker movement and when the Black Panthers came together and used our collective resources to build our communities by which the government seen us as a threat? And then the Black Panthers had the audacity to exercise their civil rights to bear arms and protest against governmental threats in our community, and that brought us some of the strongest gun laws in the state of California, if not in the country. There were also threats against the farmworkers movement, and so it did cause division between the Black Panthers and the farmworkers. And so as we honor history, we should honor it accurately. We should talk about what happened, and we should decide that moving forward, that there will be Black and Brown unity. Thank you.
Any other council comments? All right, moving on to announcements of civic and community events.
Mayor, I do have Joshua Price, who would like to make an announcement on this item.
Mayor Tuesday. I'm here to talk about a couple of events we have coming up at El Campanil. By the way, I am Joshua Price, Executive Director of El Campanil, and I'm going to work to not forget to say that when I present these things. This Sunday, the 30th, we have James Garner's Johnny Cash. Tickets for those are flying fast. If you have not seen James Garner in concert, you've got to check him out. Also, a first for us, with limited seating arrangements, we have an evening of astronomy with Masmo Pascal from the Hubble Telescope, and we are presenting that along with Grammy-nominated pianist John R. Burr. It's going to be a brilliant mix of music and some learning. Tickets for our gala, June 7th, are live. We are still looking for sponsors, and we are currently in the early bird phase for pricing, so if you are interested in checking that out, go to our website, elcampaniltheater.com. And lastly, last week, we launched our returning class for ECTA, El Campanil Theater Academy, Don't Think, Just React. This is an acting class focusing on reacting and not just rehearsing. If you'd like to learn more, please reach out to classes@elcampaniltheater.com. Thank you all for keeping arts local in Antioch.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that she didn't have any more.
Okay.
I do not have any more.
Could I do one?
Frank?
Speaker for Antioch.
Frank?
Yeah, come on down.
Come on.
Just to let you all know real quick, Chef Archie, I don't know if you all know him, but he's a veteran from the DVA down here. He works with JR and those guys. He's doing a cookout for the Kiwanis Club at the VFW on Saturday. So if you all want to get smoked meats from Archie's S&amp;Q Smoked Meats and Barbecues and support the Kiwanis at the same time, you can go to Archie's Facebook, Archie's S&amp;Q Smoked and Barbecued Meats, and it's 40 bucks for an adult or 20 for a kid. And then tips and everything will go to the Kiwanis Club, and all the funds raised will too. So it's Saturday at the VFW. Let me see the time, it's a long post on Facebook I'm trying to find. We'll go with 6:30, but you could check on Archie's S&amp;Q and Smoked Meats. If you want to purchase your tickets, you can find the time there, too. Thank you.
All right, any other speakers?
I do not have any other speakers.
All right, council comments, Councilmember Wilson?
Oh no, this is for a vet. So on April 9th, Wednesday, April 9th, District 4 will be having its community meeting from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the International Barber Shop located at 4629 Golf Course Road, or on the corner of Lone Tree Way and Golf Course Road. It's going to be from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and our special guests will be our City Manager, Bessie Scott, and our Acting Police Chief, Joe V. Hill, will be our guest speakers. So that's coming up on April 9th.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other council comments, we have announcement of board and commission openings.
For the Board of Administrative Appeals, we have two partial-term vacancies expiring March 2028. And for the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have one partial-term vacancy expiring April 2026. The extended deadline date is Friday, March 28th, at 5:00 p.m. Additionally, we have the Antioch Police Oversight Commission, one partial-term vacancy expiring November 2025. Deadline is Friday, March 28th, at 5:00 p.m. To be considered for the vacancy positions, please fill out an application available on the city's website. Printed applications are also available at Antioch City Hall. Please return the completed application by the deadline date listed above by email to cityclerk@antiochca.gov. You can also drop off the application in the water billing drop-off box outside of Antioch City Hall. And Mayor, I do have a public comment for this item. LaShonda?
Okay.
I do not think she's here anymore.
All right, moving on to City Council Committee reports and communications. Councilmember Freitas?
Just to announce that this Wednesday at 1:00 to 3:00, the Cannabis Committee is going to meet for the first time this year, and the meeting is here. So it should be an interesting topic. We're primarily going to be going through, particularly for me as a new member, where we have been, where we're at, and where we're going. So it does generate revenue to the city as well as contributions to nonprofits. So if you want to learn about cannabis in the City of Antioch, this would be a good meeting to attend Wednesday at 1:00 here in the council chamber.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Torres Walker?
Thank you, Councilmember Freitas. And we have a binder this big to get prepared by 1:00 tomorrow, so good luck, given that we're not getting out of here till 1:00 in the morning. So I haven't met with any of my committees. I know that myself and Mayor Protem Rocha have a meeting coming up, I want to say the first week, April 14th for CDBG. We also have
I meant the school.
School Board, City Standing Committee, April 14th, but CDBG meeting will be April 2nd?
I think it's the 12th.
April 2nd?
I think it's the 2nd.
April 2nd, so yes, a lot of meetings. Also, for the CDBG meeting, we have three full binders, so I hope, you know, yeah, we got to brush up on that. I also want to report out that I did attend the Green Empowerment Zone meeting in Martinez. I was appointed to the Green Empowerment Zone Committee. In that meeting, they continued to discuss Just Transition Framework for high-roach jobs. We got a little bit into the weeds of what are the new industries, the potential industries that could be successful to create high-roach jobs as we transition from fossil fuels and other extractive economies. Very interesting meeting. I'm still learning a lot about this meeting. It's actually Contra Costa and Solano coming together, so there's a lot of working parts. There's also was a meeting following that meeting with Congressman Gera Mindy to have a conversation about 45-47 and what's happening at the national level right now, what is currently at risk related to benefits and the DOGE Committee, what this could mean for our communities, and how we could prepare as advocates and also elected leaders to do our jobs locally to reduce the impact of all of the just shenanigans happening at the national level. All in all, that meeting ended, we're screwed, and we don't know what to do. And so I think it was interesting, got a lot of information that led really nowhere. However, we do need to push, continue to push back against this administration as a community. Local control is going to be more important than ever moving forward, and local governments are really going to have to shore up protections around our most vulnerable residents moving forward. And that we should also have compassion for our neighbors that voted for 47-45, because we don't need division in this time.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
How do I follow that? None of my committees met. Delta Diablo will meet in a few weeks. Yesterday, I traveled to Sacramento, the California Massage Therapy Council, who was very instrumental in helping us draft our massage establishment ordinance, and who actually will be coming back to help us update, because there's been a lot of updates to that ordinance. There was a hearing in Sacramento, whether the legislation is still going to renew in a year or two, working with that organization. And they've done such great work up and down the state of California, helping communities establish ordinances, and also making sure that legitimate massage therapists are out here and are doing good work, and making sure the bad ones who are using establishments as a place of human trafficking can no longer do that. So I was really happy to go up to Sacramento yesterday and speak on behalf of the City of Antioch in the work they did with us in partnership. So I will keep you updated on that.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Rocha?
Councilmember Torres Walker covered two of the standing committees we both share. I had the opportunity to meet with Terry House today, and thank you, Terry, for your time. There's a lot to learn with the CDBG, huge binder. Actually, there's two binders.
Three.
Three. Lots to learn about how we can support our community, especially our vulnerable community, unhoused community, and so forth. So looking at how we can match funding to services. So there's a lot to learn there. Tomorrow, Tri Delta Council, Councilmember Freitas and I both serve Tri Delta Transit, so we'll be there tomorrow. But that's it.
All right, thank you. And my committee, Contra Costa Transportation Authority, met on March 19th. We got planning updates. Countywide transportation plan was discussed, countywide bicycle and pedestrian plan. They approved the mid-year budget for $204 million. And the Gomentum Innovation Alliance is probably the biggest thing that is of interest, has to do with autonomous vehicles, and working on workforce development for that type of industry in the future, and making sure that we're prepared for that. The Contra Costa Transportation Authority owns Gomentum Station, which is out at the Concord Naval Weapons Station, where the different companies go out there and try out their autonomous vehicles. There's actually autonomous vehicles running right now in Martinez, out at Bishop Ranch, and also over in Walnut Creek at Senior Community. Rossmore, Rossmore Senior Community. So those are all running right now as we speak, and there's a lot of opportunity in there in the future, so we'll be hearing more about that. I'm going to forego Mayor's comments tonight because of the late hour, and I will ask that we have a motion to continue this meeting until 11:00, please?
Well, we actually end at 11, but at 11, we might have to extend it.
We can extend it further if we want to, but I'd like to have a motion to
I'll move that we extend to 11:30.
All right, motion to 11:30?
I'll second.
Motion and second, cast your votes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, consent calendar. Do we have any items to be polled from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, H and K.
You have H and K. Any other items?
Mayor, we have public comment for item J and L as well.
Okay, item J. Did you say J and L?
J and L, yes.
Okay, J and L. All right, so do we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar except for items H, J, K, and L?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
Motion and second, cast your votes, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, item H?
Mr. Mayor, item H is the approval of the Treasurer's Report for January 2025. I believe the Treasurer is here.
Mr. Mayor, I simply pulled the item off because Jorge Rojas is an elected member, and I would like to hear our elected member, who is the oversight of finances and direct staff, to work with him, to actually have an item on the agenda so he can make a presentation to the council. I don't have an issue with what the item is, but I do like to, excuse me, would like to hear from the other two elected members of the city, the city clerk as well as the city treasurer. I think it would be appropriate, and I ask that staff be directed to work with both individuals and schedule in the next 30 to 45 days.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of item H.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second, cast your votes, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item J, First Amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement for Webmaster Services with Digital Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is extending the current contract through December 31st, 2025, and authorizes an optional six-month extension. IS Director Alan Barton should be here to provide further information. Is Alan here?
Is there public comment on this?
We have public comment from Andrew Becker.
So I would once again request that any time that we bring contract renewals, contract extensions, we put the and I would like to hear our elected member who is the, the oversight of finances and direct staff to work with him to actually have an item on the agenda so he can make a presentation to the council. I, I don't have an issue with what the item is, but I do like to, excuse me, would like to hear from the other two elected members of the city, the city clerk as well as the city treasurer. I think it would be appropriate. And I ask that staff be directed to work with both individuals and schedule in the next thirty to forty-five days.
Do you, uh, do we have a motion?
So I'll move approval of item H.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, cast your votes, please.
Motion carries five zero.
Item J, First Amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement for Webmaster Services with Digital Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item, uh, is extending the current contract through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and authorizes an optional six-month extension. Uh, IS Director Alan Barton should be here to provide further information. Is Alan here?
Is there public comment on this?
We have public comment from Andrew Becker.
Thank you. Uh, so I would once again request that any time that we bring contract renewals, contract extensions, we put the contract into the agenda packet. I think it's a little frustrating as a community member that if I want to understand what that original contract was, what the agreement was, the expectations, I literally have to take away city staff's time by reaching out to the clerk's office and submitting a public records request for that contract. I would say it would probably be more beneficial for staff's time if the contract was in the agenda. I believe that's also more transparent. I would also like to say that the first smartphone was built, I think in nineteen ninety-four or nineteen ninety-seven. And the smartphone that we know really came into existence in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and fourteen, it was said that over a billion people a year annually purchase a smartphone. Most people today use a smartphone in lieu of an actual computer at their own home. So I would say that it's incredibly frustrating that if I want to watch a city council meeting on a smartphone, I have to connect to a Bluetooth device and crank the volume to a hundred percent. Or I have to hold the phone to my ear and destroy my vision in trying to watch that meeting. Now, if the current provider is not able to fix a problem that is constantly being brought up, I don't understand why we just keep renewing these contracts. I would also like to say that the city of Antioch is the only city that I have trouble downloading the full agenda packet on, on the mobile browser. For instance, today's agenda packet, when I get down to the public hearing item and start to go through that presentation, it automatically resets and resets and resets. And so I don't have these technical, this technical background to be able to say why that's happening. But I do know for a fact it doesn't happen when I download Brentwood's agenda or Pittsburgh's agenda. Only Antioch's agenda. So I would say that instead of renewing these contracts without the contract even in the agenda, we should put the agenda or the contract in the agenda. And I keep repeating myself here because this is not the first time I've asked this on other items. So I would like for it to go, not just for this item, but all future contracts. And I hope that next time the city council happens, even though I'll be here, if I tune in on my device, I'll be able to hear it. Thank you.
Leslie May would also like to comment on item J.
I, I need clarity. Is item J just, uh, do they also run these cameras? Does this company do this too besides the agenda? For the meetings? Okay, so if, nobody wants to answer. So if they run this camera, you need to fire them and get somebody else to do it. Because when you're at home trying to watch these meetings, you don't get a whole bunch of the meetings. It'll go black. You're like, wait a minute, what the heck? I was just watching it. Then, man, it feels like coming back on. It comes on. There's people at home watching these videos. Sometimes you can't even hear it. And it's really, really bad because like when I leave here tonight, I'll go home and turn it on while I eat dinner to see what else you guys are talking about. But this, this, this is a hot mess and you need to get whoever's running this, these, these cameras and, um, video or whatever for us to see on TV. You need to get, I don't know if he's asleep or what, but you need to get somebody that knows what they're doing or find a different vendor. I'll, I'll run it for you. You pay me.
Mr. Mayor, on that point, I thought we were test running, uh, YouTube or something. Didn't we receive something? Because we're all in agreement. The present broadcast is horrible. It's absolutely horrible. So I, I thought, I think Melissa Case is the one who came up.
Yeah, I actually, yeah, I actually talked to the city manager about this and we are doing a test run of, um, YouTube right now, which has been requested for a while from the community. You can view it now, but you might experience hiccups. I know somebody called me and said the meeting didn't start until an hour and, like you couldn't view it until an hour into the meeting? Well, the reason why you experiencing that on YouTube, actually the quality is great. The sound is great on YouTube. The challenge is that it's a test run for this period. I think it's supposed to be ready to launch early April after working out all of the kinks. So you should be able to watch it on YouTube with, with great clarity. But I also, um, agree with, um, the community that we also need to figure out the systems that we have historically had already and get those up and running. But, um, we do, we're testing YouTube right now. I watched it a couple of times.
Mr. Helfenberg, can we please get the IS, um, Director to maybe give us, um, an update on the YouTube situation?
Yes, Mr. Barton, are you available to provide that update?
Good evening, Council. For the last three meetings at least, we have been streaming to YouTube as a test as to kind of figure out how it works for us, what modifications we need to make. And as, um, Acting City Manager Helfenberg said, we're gonna hopefully go live early next month. So, and we have been working on the audio issue. We do stream to our website. We have purchased new, uh, streaming devices that will push that out um, to the CCTV, um, for viewing on, um, Comcast and AT&T, U-verse. So we are making those improvements.
All right. Thank you, Alan. Any other questions or comments from Council? Do we have a motion to approve, uh, the First Amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement for Webmaster? Second?
A second.
A motion in a second, cast your votes, please.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number K, Approval of First Amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement for Recruitment Services with Bob Hall and Associates in the amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this item is requesting approval for a resolution that includes two key actions. Firstly, as you stated, approving the First Amendment to the Consultant Services Agreement for Executive Level Recruitment Services with Bob Hall and Associates and authorizing, uh, City Manager to execute the First Amendment. We have Anna Cortez, Human Resources Director here, available also to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, so I read it and so I'd like to know what the four positions are. Nowhere in any of the information do we know who the four positions are? And number two, when I looked at project cost, executive team recruitment is twenty-four thousand, five hundred, times four is ninety-eight thousand. But the, the action item is ninety-six. Did we get a two thousand dollar discount?
Uh, for the first question, um, I do know that we are going to be recruiting for Community Development Director and City Attorney. The other two positions remain to be determined. Uh, we're, we're evaluating staffing needs and also we're, we're trying to limit the amount of information that we share about, uh, personnel matters that are, uh, on the dais. Um, the second question, I'm not aware of.
Why? They're vacancies.
Uh, they're anticipated.
Well, then on that note, City Attorney Recruitment is twenty-six thousand, five hundred.
And the amount, uh, because it ranges, again, it depends. Uh, so what the recruitment fees, if you look at the, uh, proposal, it states that it could be anywhere from either twenty thousand if we recruit at a lower, uh, for instance, an assistant, um, position or twenty-four thousand, which would be the, um, the city attorney. So it's, it's, uh, an average. So it's not the exact amount and that's how we came up with that amount.
Okay, what are the four positions? I, I don't understand. This is a public document. What are the four positions? The city council has been asking for these to be filled for months and months. So this is a positive thing to celebrate. I just want to know what are the positions?
Yes. Um, I can tell you that we do have, for a fact, right now, we have vacant the Community Development Director, Economic Development Director, the City Attorney, and as you know, um, uh, Kwame Reed has left as the Assistant City Manager. Uh, so we, well, I will defer to the City, uh, Manager to give me direction for the next, you know, which ones we're going to be recruiting for first.
Yeah, as I stated, Councilmember Freitas, the, the ones that we're able to share at this time are the, the City Attorney and the Community Development Director. The others are to be determined.
And I don't think we should approve this contract until we know. Because this is an issue that we have been raising for months and months, that we want the executive positions filled. I was so happy to read this and I just don't understand why we're not, I, I can't imagine. I spent thirty, forty years in HR. I can't understand why we don't say what the positions are. That seems awfully strange. So if that's the case, I'm not voting for it. I want to know what the positions are.
Yes, Councilmember Torres Walker?
So it is the job of the City Manager to hire positions, executive level positions. We know that coming in, and Anna Cortez has said, Community Development Director, Economic Development Director, there's a, um, City Attorney is not hired by the City Manager. The City Attorney is hired by his council. And so the, I'm assuming the City, City Manager is seeking this council's support to do our job, which is hire a City Manager because we still don't have, I mean, to hire a City Attorney because we still don't have, we don't have a permanent City Attorney. But I just think like we're going, well, obviously I can't mention certain conversations we had, but like this is once again another issue around the City Manager is trying to recruit to fill executive level positions as requested by this council. And just because she isn't specifically telling us which positions are being filled, we're going to vote not to support moving a contract forward before we know when we have no authority over who she hires and doesn't hire. I actually did have a conversation with the City Manager and asked her the very same question. And I felt like her response was reasonable because in the, within the recruitment process, you have no idea if there are city staff internal to the city that are also campaigning for these positions. The City Manager is actively restructuring the city and so some of these positions might happen from staff that are already internal and not external. And so she didn't want to put that information out there for there to be potential HR issues, um, down the line as she restructures the city as well as hire these, um, management level positions. So I don't see a problem with allowing the City, the City Manager to move forward and do her job while waiting to get a response. It doesn't have to hap, happen here. This is just another example of how we are not allowing the City Manager to move forward and do her, do her job.
Mr. Mayor, I could not disagree with you more. It is our job to oversee expenditures. I want to know what I'm spending my money on because I read four positions, ninety-six thousand. I looked at the contract and it doesn't add up. So now I understand City Attorney may be one of them, somebody less may be one of them. It is public information. There should be transparency. I'm not telling the City Manager who to hire or who not to hire. But the item before us is a contract of almost a hundred thousand dollars. I want to know full transparency and details what's involved. I think it is appropriate as the overseers for us to know that. So if, if we want to hold this off and have the City Manager come and address it, that's fine. I'm willing to do that. But the, the item i- is transparency in the four positions. I don't get it. Uh, this is, should be a simple thing. So I, I, I think we're breaking a public trust by not having full disclosure.
Mr. Mayor, one other, uh, potentially helpful piece of information that I can share is that, as I stated, the two positions that we do know at this time that are going to be recruited under this contract extension are the City Attorney and the Community Development Director. There are more than four positions, vacant positions in the city at this time that are at the senior level or at the executive management level. So it has not been determined what the other two will be, but there are more than four total that are open at this time.
On that point, the City Manager and the City Attorney are our employees. This is the first time I've heard that we're recruiting for the City Attorney. I would think that the employers would have full knowledge of that. Shame on you for not letting us, the city council, know that you're recruiting for this City Attorney.
And we're not recruiting, just to, uh, clarify that. What we're, what I did is just to put it out there. I just put, again, the staff report, what it's addressing is the possibility. It just to give you, um, you know, the ability, if you wanted to use this firm for that recruitment, it was just, again, that's why it was an, um, an average of if we were, as you saw in the report, uh, in the proposal, they are costing that out. So it was just in case, should council decide to use this firm, we would use that, uh, firm for the City Attorney hire. But, but you're right, it is your hire, but again, that was just a way to try to get us and save us some time of going back out and doing another RFQ and the whole process.
I, I would also add that the recruitment of the City, the City Attorney would of course be done in consultation with, with the council, absolutely. We, we recognize that the City Attorney is a position that needs to be recruited and so we're trying to help move that along.
So, so the, so the City Attorney, um, recruitment or the ability to recruit is just being held until we, until we decide to move forward with that. Is that what you're saying?
That, that's my understanding. Is that correct, Ms. Cortez?
Yes, and then again, I'm getting, waiting for a direction from, uh, City Manager and the other positions, but the City Attorney will be your, uh, decision whether you choose to go with this company for them to go and, um, and start the recruitment process.
All right, is there any more questions or from staff?
I don't know. Do we, where, where are we going with this? Do we, do, do we want her to do her job or not?
I do want her to do the job. I want to do our job.
Our, our job is not to continue to make the City Manager's job difficult when we came in and even, and, and everybody blasted what they wanted over social media and opinion papers. So we already know the positions that, that y'all want to field. We also don't know the positions that y'all, that y'all wanted to be vacated so you could refill them because it's already out there. I'm just saying that the City Manager is trying to be proactive and is also restructuring the city. So it's quite possible that she could tell you the four positions at the next council meeting and still not recruit for those exact four positions because she is restructuring the city.
Okay, I'm not going to raise my voice to match yours, but structure, structure is a council decision.
No, it's not. It's the City Manager's decision.
The City Manager hires and fires the positions that have been approved and money allocated. It is the council's position, not the City Manager.
The City Manager runs the city. If you want to run the city, you should become the City Manager, not a city council member and not the mayor.
Look, I am elected here to do my job and I'm afraid that, and City Manager is not enabling us to do our job. And that's my objection. And you keep on saying let her do the job? Well, then let her have us do our job. And I just found out from tonight that we may have a City Attorney. Tonight, our employee, that is inappropriate. It is inappropriate. Mr. Mayor, I asked for a ten-minute break.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just, just a clarification. So the, my understanding is that yes, the City Attorney, the full-time position, I am just an interim, I'm a contractor, the full-time position would be staffed by this agency or they would, they would, one of their four would be this position. But I, I do want to make clear, yes, you, the council, will make that decision. And, and I've done this twice before with you because I, this is the third time I've been your interim. But it was run by HR and by the City Manager's Office, the recruitment. Because even though you pick this position, you are correct, you picked the City Attorney. It is an administrative function of HR and, and in fact, I think it was Ms. Mastay who ran the recruitment uh, when she was here as Administrative Services Director in HR for, uh, my predecessor, Mr. Smith. So I just want to be clear that you need this contract to conduct the City Attorney, um, search and then it can be used for the other four. So the, I, I just want to be clear that the approval of this agreement amendment would authorize the City Attorney search. You don't need to go out and do that separately and it is a staff function to run that so that it's presented to you.
Understood. Um, it appears that there's a lot of, uh, questions about this item and I would recommend that we, um, continue it to the next city council meeting so the City Manager could be here to answer those questions.
You need a motion for that?
Do I have a motion for that? Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second that.
A motion and second. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five-zero.
All right, moving on to item number L, new class specification assigning salary range, uh, to the management bargaining unit.
I, I believe there was a public comment.
I'm sorry, there was a public comment on the last item.
Leslie May for item L.
No, please, please make your public comment.
Okay, all right. My public comment is that, um, assigning the salary range and assigning the classification to the management bargaining unit, senior level. Um, I've been looking at the pri, the salaries for these different positions, um, and the salary ranges, but also the qualifications. And I need for someone to tell me where a person with a high school diploma could come in making, um, at least ninety and work up to a hundred thousand dollars a year on some of these, and over, on some of these positions. Yet, you have people here in this city that have been living in this city trying to get on to, get into the government, trying to get these jobs with the city, who have training, they've paid for master's degrees, some of them are still paying for their masters. Okay, um, but they've had it, they've had the experience, not just the degree, but they've had the experience working at some of these, uh, positions that are highlighted. But they're, they're starting off, salaries are high. And I believe because we have a budget problem, we need to start cutting from the top instead of cutting from the bottom. The pyramid, you look at a pyramid, if you start pulling out parts of that pyramid from the bottom, the whole thing eventually is going to crumble. And we're at that point where we've been pulling out from the bottom on different sides and stuff until the city of Antioch is about to crumble. Okay, first of all, we don't have transparency, never have, with the budget. And then, we're looking at these salaries. And then, when you look at the people in those classifications that are making their salaries, they don't look like me. They don't look like, uh, uh, um, this young man sitting here, who's our city treasurer, I guess, they don't look like that. What, what you see is everything that is non-colorful. And that in itself is a problem. So, when you're talking about assigning classifications and, uh, and budget salary ranges and all that, I think we need a more fair and, and comparable, uh, a way of deciding this. I don't know if you guys have a subcommittee or, like, you have all these other subcommittees for everything else. I think you probably need a subcommittee to really examine and see, are these salaries outrageous? And are they equitable for people of all cultures and races? And then, look at historically the numbers of who they interview, applicants of color and who they have interviewed and how many they have turned down even though they were overly qualified. So, that's my, my remark. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment on this item?
Um, we do not have any other speaker cards on this item.
Okay, any questions or comments from council that's left up there? None? Do, do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion and second. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries three-zero with council member Wilson and council member Freitas not present.
All right, we are going to take a, um, ten-minute break before we start on the public hearing item, um, until, uh, ten-thirty-eight.
The council is recessing at ten-twenty-nine for ten minutes.
All right, everybody, we're going to get ready to start back up again. It is ten-thirty-eight. Could I please get a roll call? Madam Clerk?
Council member Wilson.
Here.
Council member Torres Walker.
Present.
Council member Freitas. Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
All members present at ten-thirty-eight PM.
All right, public hearing, um, Lone Tree Retail Project, uh, continued, uh, from March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, council meeting. City Attorney, could you please assist with some procedures and options we have here tonight to continue the public hearing?
Yes, so, we closed the public hearing at our last meeting. This, this is going to get a little wonky. There's a legal consequence and a practical consequence. By closing the public hearing, we closed off any challenges or right to what we call exhaust challenges to the project. So, someone who wants to challenge the, the SEQA determinations or the findings, um, because those are the public hearing requirements set forth by SEQA or the planning and zoning law. But the Brown Act says that every item on an agenda has to provide for public comment. So, even though we've closed the public hearing, we still have to take public comments. But what that means is that people can exhaust legal challenges to the project, that, that time is done. So, that's the legal consequence. The practical consequence is if we do not reopen the public hearing, then we go with the usual three-minute speaking deadline. So, you only get three minutes. There's no ten minutes for the opponent, no ten minutes for the proponent. If we change and we reopen the public hearing, then the proponent would get ten minutes. If there is a, an opponent, he or she would get ten minutes. And then, each public commenter would get five minutes. So, there's a legal consequence and then there's a practical consequence. I, hopefully, I know that I'm getting really procedural and very much in the weeds. And I hope I didn't, you know, overly complicate matters. But if you wish to reopen the public hearing, that should be done by motion.
Yes, um.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we reopen the public hearing.
We have a motion, I have a second to reopen from the public hearing?
Second.
A motion is second?
On the, on the motion, not on this motion, to continue the public hearing, or to reopen.
Please cast your votes.
Six.
Motion carries five-zero.
All right, we will, um, open this public hearing. Uh, this is, uh, for the Lone Tree Retail Project. It's, uh, um, council or, um, city manager Huffenberg, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you mentioned, this is a continuation from the city council meeting from March eleventh. Um, at that meeting, uh, council voted five-zero to continue the discussion of the project. The Lone Tree Retail Project is a commercial project consisting of three buildings, a car wash, quicks, quick services restaurant, and combination quick service restaurant and retail building at the vacant parcels on Lone Tree Way next to the existing In Shape Fitness Center. The entitlements before council tonight are adopting an addendum and approving a final development plan, use permit and design review. And with that, I will turn it over to Zoe Meredith, the planning manager.
Yes, good evening. I'm Nathan Tencler, associate planners here and can provide any questions that you may have on the project.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. You, you don't have a, you don't have a presentation?
So, I don't have a formal presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. I know the applicant is here and has a presentation as well, um, if you'd like to hear from them again. I would note that, um, since the last hearing, um, the applicant revised the landscape plans to accommodate some additional screening along the project drive-throughs, which was, um, one of the main comments that, um, we heard on March eleventh. Um, and, uh, other than that, I'm happy to answer any further questions that council had about the project.
All right, do we have a proponent and an opponent for this item? Proponent? All right.
Yes, we have both.
All right, um, proponent, please. You'll have ten minutes to speak.
Can I wait for him to get his renderings up? I don't want the clock starting.
Ready?
Yeah, ready. Thanks. Assuming that this thing works. Um, yeah, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Bernal, council members. Nice to see you all again. Here to, uh, represent, I'm going to focus a little bit more on some of the, the higher-level important topics that, uh, we heard loud and clear and that we, I believe we've addressed pretty well. I do hope everybody's had an opportunity to read through the presentation. It is eighty-one pages, so I know it, it's a little long, but there's a lot of information in there and I think it's pretty important. Um, and I'm hoping that, uh, you know, anybody who is going to speak to the project also has taken the time to take a look at our presentation because I think we've addressed many, many comments that we heard. Um, I'm not going to re, restate a lot of things we already know. Um, we're developers, we've been doing this for a long time. We've owned this property for twenty years. We built, um, the In Shape Company. And we've also done a lot of other development projects, uh, including big fives. And, um, I mean, I've got a big list of everything over the last twenty years, thirty years, probably over two million square feet. So, we've got a lot, a lot of experience in development and we've worked very hard on this project. We heard that there, out of the meetings we had, or the meeting we had two weeks ago, plus some other subsequent conversations, and also looking at public comments, it, we tried to isolate this down to, to use this time, uh, in a pretty efficient way. We obviously heard that economic development is important. I mean, I've been to two of these meetings now in the last two weeks. And the first three hours of these meetings, a lot of the conversation is around the budget, funding, programs. We are bringing an economic development project to the city. And we're going to talk about that and hopefully it'll go fast. I'm going to briefly talk about the commercial infill housing project because it's, the overlay is important to how we got here. We talked briefly about the restaurant tenants and the drive-through use, and then how we've mitigated traffic flow and safety and how our project is gorgeous, in my opinion. We've, we're obviously pretty committed. Uh, this came up, uh, in the last meeting. We've spent over a million and a half holding this property. We're spending eighty thousand dollars a year just holding vacant land. And right now, I have about four hundred thousand dollars into this project. These are the tenants that we've worked with over the years, building for them. I can't see the, the numbers on here. All right. Economic development, just jumping right to the most important pa, page. We're bringing two phenomenal fast casual restaurants to this, to this location. We're bringing a great express car wash operator. We're going to employ over seventy people. These are jobs that, from what I can tell, are needed in this city. And these businesses up in the front are going to generate over five hundred thousand dollars in annual sales tax revenue just from the three tenants. The increase in property taxes, once these buildings are built, is going to generate over seventy thousand additional per year revenue. I'm not talking also in relation to the housing project that's going behind us on the rear nine acres. That alone is going to generate another eight hundred and fifty thousand, per their comments to me today about what it's going to cost to build that, sixty to seventy million dollars. So, between our three acres up front and the nine acres in the rear, we're going to generate a million dollars in property taxes and five hundred thousand dollars a year minimum in annual sales taxes. From what I can tell, this is money that is drastically needed by the city. I'm going to jump ahead on some other things that we, we obviously just don't have time to talk about. Casual restaurants or sit-down casual restaurants came up a lot in the conversation. And the reality is, we have talked to a lot of them. We've got three small acres up in the front. We need to address, uh, drive aisles because this is part of a, a shopping center coordinated with the In Shape. So, we need to have access. And we've got a housing project that's going behind where there will be a retaining wall and fencing that separates a housing project, so it's a gated housing project, from the commercial project in the front. Number one, there is not enough room to put anything bigger than what we have. Simple as that. I can't create more space or land than what is existing, and that is the fact. Sit-down restaurants take five to seven, or, I'm sorry, six to eight thousand square feet. I've heard great ideas, Texas Roadhouse, Cattlemen's, Jack's, I've heard of all. They're great ideas. They're not going to work on this site. I'm going to be emphatic. They will not work here. You can, you know, we can wish for, for these things. They won't, they won't come here to this site. It's not big enough. And number two, they want freeway visible, they want high traffic. And they don't want to be one of the brands, which we've all seen, that are going under because sit-down restaurant and inside, and in dining has changed dramatically since we planned this twenty years ago. And that's the reality that we're living in. I've, I've addressed the Cattlemen's, the Texas, we've talked about Cheesecake Factory. Um, one of the things that did come up, and I didn't, oh, the, uh, commercial in-house, or, sorry, the commercial infill housing. Our property was one of ten. I think everybody knows this. Our property was one of ten. The city selected the back nine acres and left the front three to, uh, be, to remain as-is, basically. And so, the eight-point-nine or nine acres in the back became the, the commercial infill housing, which is how we were able to secure a, um, a development with a reputable housing developer who's going to be bringing two hundred and forty-five housing units to the city of Antioch, hopefully starting in twenty-twenty-six and finishing by twenty-twenty-eight. We, we, we can talk about the site plans, we can talk about the, uh, the screening. This is important. I heard a lot of comments about the, uh, lights from cars shining. This is the parcel E that is on the west side. This, as you can see, our, our, uh, site sits about six feet above Lone Tree. So, cars on Lone Tree actually are going to be looking at vegetation and a retaining wall, and then more vegetation before they can actually even see cars or anything else queuing up. Parcel F is, is the, the Habit Burger, which, by the way, I went and had tonight. It was fantastic. I had the, the Ah He tuna burger and felt really great, um, as an aside. This is the Habit Burger. Um, the, the wall does taper to about three or four feet there, but we still have the same screening. Um, and we've, we've, uh, put in fifteen gallon, uh, fifteen gallon plants instead of, excuse me, instead of five. And then, this is the, the Chipotle where we've, uh, added, um, a design wall in the front, which we'll have to talk to the, the city planning department a little bit on this, this exact specifications because that's an add. And we've increased the, uh, the hedging here, again, to address any type of screening concerns. We really feel we've developed a, a beautiful site. We feel we've got great tenants. We feel that they are incredibly healthy. We added, uh, a lot of information within the deck, but I don't think we're, we're here to talk about the menu items. I, I made it really clear last time that as a fitness, uh, expert, I, I consider myself a fitness expert over the last thirty years running In Shape. I would gladly feed my family at either one of these restaurants. I think they've got great options. I think that they are high-quality tenants. I think they're going to be here. They're not going to be a restaurant that's go, going to go out of business. I think that that should be a strong concern. I've seen a lot of empty boxes as I've driven around a lot of communities, including here. And a lot of these are former restaurants that no longer are relevant and can't make it anymore. And I think it's really important for the city council to choo, to help developers choose and support businesses that you know are going to be here, are going to be supportive of the community. And I think we're bringing three great tenants to our site on a thirteen-acre development that's been vacant for, well, forever, because that, it was vacant before we bought it. And then, last but not least, because I only have about a minute, um, just to talk quickly about the site plan, which is, we spent about a year working with our traffic engineers and with the city to ensure that the queuing and the way that the drive aisles and everything works with the housing project and with In Shape, who is a, you know, sixty thousand square foot, uh, anchor tenant and is very, very important to, uh, how, how traffic works because they are, they do get very busy. Um, and we did a lot of different things, three of which things are right here up on the plan from, uh, that came out of the city comments and city, uh, plan from, that came out of the city comments and city requests. So we've got a plan that is supported by the city traffic department, planning, and we've got a lot of support from our tenants. And I think we've got a great project here. I would just say that, that, you know, to recap, this is a project that's bringing a positive flow of funds that are needed, great tenants, great food, it's been well-thought-out, it's master planned with the Health Club and the Housing, and I'm desperately asking you for your support. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Do we have an opponent to the project?
Andrew Becker.
All right. Mr. Becker, you'll have ten, up to ten minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate staff and the developers' time and council's time in continuing this item. I think a lot of new information has been added to the agenda. What I appreciate most here is a developer coming in and telling us what their reality is. I love that language on every slide. This is the reality of your community. I myself did not stop and get a meal from the Habit on the way over here because that meal is around twenty dollars, and I don't find that truly affordable on a Tuesday evening. I say going out for a twenty-dollar meal is a luxury on the weekend, at least here in this community and in my household. It frustrates me because you look and you hear and you see constantly, this is about traffic safety and pedestrian safety and the overall benefit for the community. And I'm not an architect or a civil engineer, but as I looked through these plans, I was a little concerned with some of the pedestrian circulation throughout the site. Correct me if I'm wrong, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but when you look at parcel E on the east side coming in off of Lone Tree, I believe that that sidewalk terminates and does not come up into the site. You have to cross over to the west side, go up, cross back over, at a non- right-of-way entrance, it's your end to the property. I'm wondering what kind of signage beyond just striping on the ground there is to show that that's a pedestrian, the main pedestrian crossing. I appreciate that the developer included that CIH plan here in this agenda because it also looks to me like on the north side of the development, there is no sidewalk fronting all of these parcels. So I'm wondering what sidewalk the residents from that development that are going to be coming out to eat the number one most-voted hamburger in the United States are going to use as they walk to this property? Because it looks like there's a bio swale with no pedestrian right-of-way. I appreciate that bike storage was factored into the development, but as we talk about bicycle safety and understanding how we navigate these streets and these properties in our community, like we'll talk about later in the Bicycle Garden if we get there, I'm wondering what kind of signage is included within the site for bicycles? Are they just going to be riding around in the parking lot with those cars? Are they going to be exiting from that multifamily through this site, out to the right-of-way along with those cars? Will there be signage or striping that shows that on the ground? I appreciate that in the first approved plan in the early 2000s, there was a trail connection into this project. But I'm wondering now, when you go out to the site, you see that beautiful retainer wall that has all that lovely graffiti on it, will pedestrians be able to get in or will they have to go all the way down to Blue Rock and come into the site and come all the way back to enjoy the nation's number one most-voted hamburger? You know, it's confusing. Well, let me keep going with the specifics. I appreciate that that only pedestrian right-of-way that leaves parcel E and goes over to parcel F has that curb cut coming into the exit of the car wash lane, but then there's no additional curb cuts or sidewalk. So are individuals expected to walk through that landscaping that separates parcel E and parcel F? Or do they go up to the street where there is no dedicated pedestrian right-of-way? I'm wondering, as pedestrians cross across all of these quick-service drivelanes in and out of all these parcels, where the dedicated striping is? Because I only see it on parcel F where there is a sidewalk that goes through that landscaping over to the ingress egress, out to Lone Tree on the west side of parcel F, or the east Where is the continuity throughout the, throughout the project? And specifically where are the pedestrian right-of-ways that come down off of that commercial infill housing? Now, I did read the full staff report and the agenda packet. And I do understand that that commercial infill housing overlay was only placed on the rear part. But I also understand that the state of California passed AB 2011. And should the developer choose to rezone commercial property to residential development at a certain density, that is their right through AB 2011. But I also understand that that would trigger what we call prevailing wage, and developers don't like to pay that. God forbid we pay those extra dollars to the unions or those finicky project labor agreements. The only way those typically pencil is by bringing in affordable housing dollars through state funding. And that would take away from that market rate housing that we so urgently need, as we later talk about our housing element to update, and how we're over-exceeding our above-market housing needs and not our affordable needs. So I didn't put together a packet for the developer. I hope that my words here tonight show what I see the reality of our situation is. I also say that up here we show Schooners went out of business. Ocean Nine Crab is there and has been there since 2001. I believe other operators are coming in. Applebee's closed and Whiskey Tango Foxtrot came in. What's the difference between Whiskey Tango Foxtrot and the Cheesecake Factory? It's not a national conglomerate. It's a small business operator that found success in a neighboring community and wanted to invest in our community. I wonder if they would have entertained a Build to Suit. I see on every page, as we go through the timeline, there were many, many, many opportunities through Crexie or LoopNet. I've been on Crexie and LoopNet since 2015, and I didn't see anything on this site until I saw these quick-service retail spaces open up in the last couple of years. So I would personally request, whatever happens tonight, that the developer reach out to me and show me those actual listings, because I didn't see them. I think there are a lot of concerns here. Our CIH overlay, I think this shows a great concern there. Staff's ability to identify the community's needs through pedestrian and bicycle safety and signing off on this without even showing a sidewalk that comes in off of Lone Tree Way, how did that happen? How did somebody say, instead of residents coming directly up, they should have to cross the street, walk up, and cross back? Do you know what a lot of community members, including the young generation, are going to do? They're going to just walk right up where all the cars are coming in. That's the reality. So if we could please pull this back up, and if the developer could come back up and respond to questions from council, because last meeting, those were not responses from council, responding to questions from council, that was the developer getting an additional opportunity to advocate for their project, which was not time-limited and was outside of the requirements of the public hearing. I did not get that opportunity. I don't think this is fair for our community. I think that this is fair for the number one best-selling hamburger in the United States, but I don't think this is fair for our community. And for a developer to come in and use this kind of language to strong our, arm our community, I'm personally affronted.
Any public comments on this item?
We do. We have Melissa, followed by Chris and Carl.
I want to start off, I appreciate the developers' better tone for this meeting because I also felt like he was using bullying tactics. And I've been thinking about this project for like two weeks now, and I keep coming to the same conclusion that the businesses planned for this portion of Lone Tree are not a good fit and do not complement the surrounding area. No matter what the developer insists, this development does not align with the neighboring property, which only has one drive-through. And while this proposal includes an apartment complex and three drive-through businesses, I'm not against the apartment and I'm also not against the car wash, because we do need one on that side of town, we just don't need two. At the last meeting, the developer resorted to bullying tactics, I'm glad he changed his tone this meeting, and rather than working collaboratively to the, address community concerns, most public comments were negative. I'm hoping to hear, well, I did hear from him, it was a better presentation. I'll say again, this side of town doesn't need another Chipotle or Habit. We keep duplicating businesses. I drove up and down Lone Tree and I noticed there's two auto zones, three miles apart. There's also another auto zone on Sommersville. We actually have four auto zones in Antioch. One council member acknowledged that we do need economic development, but I think what we actually need is smart economic development. This developer, this developer's threats to leave the lock vacant for twenty years shouldn't scare you or I. Many of us would actually prefer less traffic and congestion on Lone Tree, and you cannot tell me that three drive-through businesses and an apartment complex are not going to congest that area of Lone Tree. That's ridiculous. Adding, adding a Chipotle here is indirectly competes with El Machete, that is a small business owner on the other side of the development. And if we truly care about supporting local businesses, I think we need to think twice about that plan. Finally, I've heard several council members say it's not the city's job to attract development, but three of you ran on that very platform. Meanwhile, I see Jelani Killings in Pittsburgh actively making it happen right now for Pittsburgh. And in February of 2024, Pittsburgh actually partnered with retail strategies to develop the city strategically. And if Antioch is just going to settle for duplicate businesses, hire traffic and ignore residents, then we need a dedicated economic development director who matches Ms. Scott's energy, or at least at the next budget meeting, perhaps it's time to reconsider this position altogether, save some money and hire a company like Pittsburgh did. This community deserves better planning, better businesses, and a council that listens.
Next speaker is Chris Johnson, followed by Carl Segal and Ronald Mohammed.
Hello, council members. My name is Chris Johnson. I'm actually a, excuse me, a little taller. I've been a resident of Antioch and Brentwood for fourteen years, and I've seen this property vacant with a sign on it, my, basically the whole entire time I've been here. So I know that they've had a lot of trouble getting people to, whether it's Build to Suit or not, it's just been sitting there forever. And my wife and I go to the gym every day. We have two kids and we're the complete opposite of Andrew. We're super excited to have a Chipotle. We like healthy options, we like non-GMO food, and it's a perfect place that we go all the time. I actually own a business too, I own Purpose Built, we have a couple stores in the area and we have business meetings at Chipotle. We love the Habit, we actually look up to the Habit because they give back to the community in a huge way, including our first responders, which is pretty awesome. And we're just excited to see something happen there and not have it just be a continued dumping ground for everybody. So I just encourage people to know that, like, it sounds like the developers tried super hard to get this thing leased up and get things done, and it's cost a lot of money. And just in general, hearing what the city of Antioch needs and seeing it firsthand as a young person in the community, it's like, we need development, we need taxpayer dollars, and I just hope that you guys vote for something that's going to be good for our community in a big, big way. So thanks for hearing me out.
Next speaker is Carl, followed by Ronald and Brian.
Council members, staff and public, thank you so much for being here, giving us the opportunity to present our project again, giving us the opportunity the second time to really dig into the details of why this project is so important and the value that this project is going to bring, short-term and long-term, for this community. There's a lot of great value propositions that are brought up in the presentation that we had created. And I know that a lot of you have taken the time and it's a lot of material, but we believe virtually all these stones have been lifted. And it's all within the purview of how does this directly benefit the community today? I think we can all agree that the, at the energy in this room for this meeting and the meeting from two weeks ago is challenging because life is hard and there's a lot of challenges. But with the fact-based information that we've given you in this presentation, I think we've actually made a very easy decision for council to look and see all of the value that this project is going to bring. And if I've learned one thing, it's that the community members of Antioch, they are truly trying to live by what stands or what is written behind you, which is opportunity lives here. And when I drive around Antioch and when I think, if I close my eyes and I'm driving down Lone Tree and I see a gym that significantly positively impacted this community with eating options that not only are healthy but are conducive to the technological advancements and also just the lifestyles that we live today, a housing development that is desperately needed and a project that's going to look beautiful, you as council members, as public, are going to drive down Lone Tree and you are going to be proud of this development. I've seen the other developments. You're going to be like, wow, this thing is beautiful. And I really hope that this becomes a reality for everyone in this room and everyone in this community. And I would like to really point out that we know this, this project is going to bring critical revenue to all of the important programs that have been mentioned last meeting and this meeting. But let's talk about these two brands that aren't really getting the spotlight I think they deserve. Chipotle. They've raised ninety-five million dollars so far in fundraising. Three hundred and forty thousand different fundraisers have been held. They're a company of innovation. They bring this community forward. They have vision, and similar to Habit. I mean, that's a family-driven operation. We bring our families there. And the reality is, when you look at Chipotle, look at what they've done for the community, look at all the other community programs that they've helped. People in need, people who are re-entering the world from being incarcerated, these are programs because of this company's vision and their commitment and what they've done. These are facts. So I think if we can rally around something that the community can actually look forward to and look to aspire as business creators, as operators, making something- to and look to aspire as business creators, as operators, making something that's really seamless and flow for the community, I would ask, what is a better fit than right now? So we're bringing you this opportunity and obviously I'm really excited about it because I believe in it and I've worked on it for countless hours. But I believe that in that presentation and what we presented to you today, this is the right choice. The choices to move forward with a yes vote. And let's see this thing be developed and let's see this thing be used by everyone in this community. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Ronald, followed by Brian and Victor. I do not think Ronald is here anymore. Brian?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Brian Heron, Commercial Retail Associates, Fresno, California is our base. I'm the real estate representation for the ownership group and have been working on this project since inception back in the PD day of 2004, 2005. Excuse me. I am with, as I said, Commercial Retail Associates. Just to share a little of my pedigree, I've been at this for 38 years as a commercial real estate agent specializing in retail and retail product only. All I do is lease development and asset transactions for retail and shopping centers. We have been actively marketing this since inception. And I'm glad to hear some of the comments. And I, I'd prefer not to go back and bore with all the history. I really would like to look forward from 2022 under the CIH forward. As Mr. Becker had stated, and thank you for doing so, the CIH is a very important redefine, if you will. Yes, there is a PD. Yes, it's an underlying PD that governs the Health Club and the project. That said, the CIH with its 8.9 acres dedicated to the residential multifamily left three acres. I don't know which slide it is, but you'll see that there is an old slide of the original site plan. That original site plan presumed 126,000 feet of additional retail space. We have not been able to lease that to grocery. The reasons we were unable to lease it to grocery was the existing competitive set and the competitors that have come in. Since then, 2015, even Walmart added 33,575,000 feet of grocery. We have been bookended by Costco, both in Antioch and in Brentwood. The grocery sector is effectively done for this when you consider Rayleigh's, Lucky's, Safeway, Food Max. I have been to the ICSE events. It's something you've probably seen in the package, what that means. It's the International Council of Shopping Centers. I've been a member for 38 years. I was there in Monterey at their ICSE show before coming here. All that to simply say, we have gone through the 2007 recession, the 2008 commercial, excuse me, crash, the 2008 commercial crash. We've seen the recession in 2015. We've seen Target come and go. And we now have a residential project being under different application. And we have three remaining pads. These pads are, with the tenant mix we have, are complementary. They're compatible with cross pollination or cross trade between parcels, including the Health Club, the multifamily, as well as the businesses, Sutter Gould and, and the medical center training. So we have a very exciting project with a very complimentary retail lineup that, that I'm proud of. Secondarily, or again, and I'll let Rodney Alonso, if he's got a card, and speak to some of the ADA issues and some of those items, because it is an integrated, comprehensively well thought out plan. And he can address that. I too am excited. I've been on this project from the inception. I am glad to see we are finally at a point of a very positive project with great benefit, beautiful new residences that will, will occur, great streetscapes and something that this community be really, really proud of. I'd like to just reserve the rest of my time, if I may, for a call up to answer any questions that the, the council may have of me or the public. Thank you. Oh, last comment I'd like to make, if I may. The comment was made, build a suit. I do want to distress and, and make mention that these tenants are not just tenants. These tenants are making capital investment into these properties, big capital investments. Specifically, Mr. Carwash and Habit Burger, they are building their own structures. They will be spending millions of dollars of their money. Chipotle is a build a suit. My understanding is based on the address of the Chipotle, that's a Brentwood address and currently Antioch does not have under its registry a Chipotle. Again, thank you.
Next speaker is Victor, followed by David and Robin.
Good evening, council. My name is Victor Ramos. I am a district manager for In Shape Health Clubs, also a local resident here. I'm here past my bedtime just because I'm super excited about what they're doing. And being someone that works on Lone Tree, works at the In Shape there daily, seeing all the residents there, seeing the community, our 5,000 plus members that we have that come in and out of our doors, when they walk out, they see a field. Plain and simple. And that field gets dumped, that field gets trashed, and then we have to go clean it consistently. And what I'm excited about is our members that come to our club, we're building a community there. We've actually did some renovations that have made the place look so spectacular. We have people coming from all over Contra Costa to visit our location. So it's not just Antioch anymore. You're looking at Brentwood residents, Concord residents coming down just to see our new fitness facility. Some of the things that we did is really state of the art inside. And it's really cool and we're drawing people in. And when those people come in, they're also seeing that field. It would be really cool for them to see something to eat and with healthy options, that's even better and fits our brand and helps us feel confident about having that there as well. So being someone that's not an owner, from a different perspective, is me just working there somewhere where I would eat for lunch, I think that's exciting. I don't have to drive somewhere else down the street, look for other things, pass by tons of McDonald's and Burger Kings and find something that I can eat. I think that's really cool. But super excited about this and I just wanted to share that, just being someone that is local here, that works there every day and sees our members. It's hard enough for our members to walk through our doors. Every single day they come in, they're, they're banking on changing their lives and anything can deter them from that, we don't want that. And I don't think that this is that. I think this is something that's really going to help the community. So thank you.
Next speaker is David, followed by Robin and then Rod.
I am short. Good evening, everybody. How you guys all doing? A little nervous, I don't usually do this. But my name's David Epstein. I am the club of In Shape at Antioch here, club general manager, sorry. But I'm also 30 plus years of residence in Antioch. And so I grew up here, I went to Antioch High. So to kind of see and work out here is kind of interesting over the years because obviously it has changed. But one thing that I am sick of is dealing with the homeless and dealing with the dumps and stuff that goes on in those, in that area that they're speaking on where they want to build. Every day, I'm the one that has to address that. I'm the one that has to deliver the member experience and that's what I'm truly about. So building something there, also having these type of restaurants are something that I use on a weekly basis. I go to Chipotle every, twice a week, to be honest with you. I have a son, so he gets out of school, I'm stopping by there, I'm getting Chipotle. So it's, it's easier if it's right there opposed to going to Brentwood. Also the Habit, I eat there once, once a week too. So I'm, I'm excited to have these restaurants right next door to me. So, and then also just, you know, growing up in Antioch, like I said, over 30 something years, that thing that's been dead there for all these years, let's, let's, let's build something there. So I'm super excited to kind of see what they, I haven't even seen the stuff, but what they're looking to do, I'm excited, honestly. Antioch needs help. Antioch needs growth. This is going to bring, you know, new business, obviously, new jobs, helping the community stay out of trouble. That's what we need right now. But yeah, I'm like, I'm super excited. So if we can do this, let's get it going. I'm tired of cleaning up the homeless, tired of cleaning up the dumps. I mean, I had axles that got dumped there before. You know, it's, it's interesting of what people leave there and I have to deal with it. And then I have to deal with the code enforcer that I get fined for every day to kind of clean it up too. So it goes hand in hand. So that's why I'm kind of just more excited to kind of get that off my task list every day and see the beautiful, like Victor said before, coming out and seeing the, you know, some growth out there instead of dirt and, you know, high weeds and everything like that. So, so please, let's approve this, let's get it going. But yes, I'm, I'm excited for this. Thank you.
Next speaker is Robin, followed by Rod and Mort.
Robin Agopian, thank you for extending the council. You guys are probably exhausted at this point as you're listening to everybody, but I want to just say, I remember In Shape when I first moved here and then they opened, it wasn't built yet and we registered, I became a member, my husband and I, in the Portables. Do any of you guys remember that? I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm like going back a long ways. But anyway, it's been really nice. When I saw this project, when I heard about it, I loved the visuals that they brought today. And I think the presentation would be an awesome addition for us driving down Lone Tree. And I appreciate what Melissa said about El Machete, which a plug for them. If you haven't been there, they are a family business that's just awesome tacos and food. But I have to tell you, between the two, I think they both can survive because Chipotle offers something that is a different dynamic. On a side note, if you have military, Chipotle is awesome about doing a military discount for any, you know, people serving in the military. I was amazed at how generous they are as a company. As a side note, that was just fabulous every time I go there. But I would love the council to say yes to this project. I think it would be an addition. I live in the neighborhood right across from In Shape. I walked In Shape sometimes when I'm motivated, but I go at five in the morning, so I'm not walking at five in the morning. But, but anyway, it's an awesome addition to have. I like the Habit is an option, the Car Wash, I think it can be done. If there's anything that needs to be, you know, changed a little bit, I think, I don't know how it is with developers, they might be wringing my neck right now, but I do think that this would be a great project for us. Many of you live and drive down that way and I think it just would be, the, the look of it looks just very appealing. I think it would be a great addition. Thank you for that.
Next speaker is Rod and then we have Mort.
I'm mayor, council. Rod Alonso with API. I'm the architect on the project. I was also the architect on the In Shape 20 plus years ago. You know, I'll keep this short, you know, we've gone through a lot of this, but just want to let you know, you know, the, as we were developing this project, we have worked with planning, with staff for a while on this one. And we have gone through all of the municipal code and we've met all the guidelines, design guidelines that were put before us. We've worked with planning on consistency throughout the parcels. You know, we have corporate identities on each of these buildings and they all look different, but we did our best, working with planning, to try to keep the materials consistent throughout these, throughout these buildings. On the, regarding parking, we've, we've met all the parking requirements, landscape, we've met all the landscaping requirements. As had been mentioned earlier, that we've increased some of the landscaping and addressed some of the issues on screening that have been mentioned previously. Regarding accessibility, we do have accessible passive travel from the multifamily to parcel G to where Chipotle is at. It comes from the multifamily down around kind of that center turn area into the parcel G. Then from parcel G, it crosses over to parcel F and that's where Habit is at. For parcel E, where the Car Wash is at, we have made a revision on the site plan that is extending the walkway along Blue Rock. And we'll go up to, up along that roadway there and then cross over to the Car Wash. So we have addressed all of the accessibility items on the site. You know, I've been doing this architectural for 30 plus years and I always make sure that we have accessibility taken care of. I mean, the building department won't let us develop the project without all the accessibility requirements, so we have to do it. I mean, it's, it's, you know, I wouldn't be the design, I wouldn't be a good designer if I didn't do it. So we will make sure that's all taken care of. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we extend the city council meeting to 12 midnight.
Motion to move the meeting or extend it to 12 midnight, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes.
Motion carries for one with Councilmember Torres Walker abstaining. Next speaker is Mort.
Hello, city council members. I'm Paul's dad, first of all. I started In Shape back in 1981. Paul came along in 1992, became CEO and managed In Shape all the way through until it was sold. I, I'm here basically because I, I want to give a little hilarity to what's happening tonight, if I may. Paul picked me up tonight. I live in Stockton most of the time. I'm a retired urologist and that's why I got out of medicine and started In Shape with a single club many, many years ago. Paul picked me up tonight and in the car was Carl. And they kept talking about Habit Burger. I said, he says he wants to stop and have a Habit Burger. That's all I understood, all the way in the car, all the way up Highway, Highway 160 and 10, and, and to 12, I think it is. Anyway, we finally saw the store, which I thought was going to be Habit Burger, turned out to be Habit Burger. So that's, I said, well, that's nice, let's have a Habit Burger. I don't know what that is yet. I've never had a Habit Burger. So, so we went in the store and I said to Paul, gosh, this, this could be a sit down restaurant almost. There's a lot of space here, a lot of tables. It's quiet, it's nice, it's clean. We ought to, we ought to maybe propose a Habit Burger. We laughed because it's already been done. It was a joke on me. That's all I have to say.
I do not have any more speaker cards for this item.
All right, we have no more speakers. It's now to the city council for any comments or questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Close the public hearing.
Well, come on, I voted to be here to midnight.
I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to keep Tameisha after midnight, so I'll go ahead and speak. I spoke last time. I brought up the economic development and the need for that. I mean, we look at the programs, the valuable programs and services that have obviously helped our community, especially our most vulnerable when we look at our unhoused community and we look at some of the, you know, the Home Key Program, the Angelo Quinto Rescue, a number of valuable programs that are happening in our community. And at the same time, when I look at the revenue sources that from the last few years, it just continues to decline. And as I stated the last meeting when we talked about this, we have to look at ways to, to generate our general fund revenue so that we can afford to support these valuable programs that everybody seems to be advocating for. And so for me, I just think it's a good business decision for the city of Antioch to look at economic development. I, I don't, I can't recall the last new business construction that's happened locally. I've seen businesses opening into old buildings that have been closed, but in terms of new construction, I just think it'll bring a lot to, to our community in terms of revenue and also options for people. They don't, you know, everybody has the freedom to choose where they go. They don't, you know, everybody has the freedom to choose where they go. Um, as I, you know, one thing that was interesting is I, um, as, as, I'm an old principal, some of you know that about me, and during my time as high school principal, I was elected to serve on the California Interscholastic Federation, which oversees high school sports in the state of California. And so I went to the Golden One Arena to watch the state championships for boys and girls' basketball since our last time that we were here to discuss this item. And to my surprise, when I walked out of my hotel to into the Golden One Center, I see Chipotle sitting right there and I go to meet a couple of the CIF executives from another part of the state and they invited me to come and meet them there and sit down, have a bite and talk over about the actual competitions that were about to take place. And, and I was pleasantly impressed and I thought to myself, if it's good enough for Golden One, I don't understand why it wouldn't be good enough for Antioch. And I also look at Habit Burger, I know it could be an expensive burger, that's what people tell me, I haven't eaten there yet, but I think it's again, all down to options. So for me, I like to repeat, and then I'm not going to say the whole words over and again, but I am in favor of this project because I do believe it brings economic development to our community. My wife works out at, um, at the gym seven days a week. My son is a vegetarian who works out there often and he eats at Chipotle, that's probably his favorite restaurant. So for my family, it's a win. So, um, other people have choices to make, that's the choice that my family chooses to make. So I'll ask that you, uh, support this project tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other comments anyone would like to make?
And I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this project, the Lone Tree, um, project before us this evening.
Before, uh, I, I would like to make a comment on the motion before we vote. Um, the, uh...
Don't give me a second.
Oh, yeah, we need a second, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Yes, sir.
So the, there's two items. One is to adopt the, um, negative declaration and the second would be to approve the final development plan.
So is, is the...
So is the motion to adopt both?
Yes. That was my guess.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, so just so it's clear on how I'm voting and why I'm voting, uh, this, uh, this, this project's right around the corner from my house, so I've belonged to In Shape when it first opened up, fell away during COVID, um, but, uh, sorry, I haven't made it back there yet. Um, but I will check it out now that all these great improvements have been made. But so, uh, so the, the property, the property's been sitting vacant, um, that's a very prominent curve on Lone Tree Way to me and, and I wanted to make sure that whatever's put there is going to be architecturally, um, attractive, which I believe this project is. I think oftentimes Antioch gets projects that are not, um, as well-designed, especially the backside of them, residentially, especially that back up to Lone Tree Way, this project is attractive on, on that edge, uh, and wrapped all four corners of it, so it looks, it looks really good. The landscaping, uh, on top of that retaining wall, uh, that hides all of those cars with the fifteen-gallon plants that are going to grow up, and then with the addition of the, the short masonry wall in front of the drive-through and in front of Chipotle, I think is a good addition and, uh, addresses my concerns about looking at cars, so I didn't want to look at forty cars coming down Lone Tree Way. I think that's a bad look. Uh, we have, um, Chipotle in, in Brentwood, a few miles one way, in Pittsburgh, a few miles the other way. And, you know, I always wonder if it's good enough for Pittsburgh and it's good enough for Brentwood, why isn't it good enough for Antioch? And so, uh, the argument that this is not a, uh, the type of restaurant that people would want to eat at, I, I think there's a lot of people that would want to eat at this, at Chipotle, Habit and, and get a car wash, frankly. So, um, I was at Costco, uh, on Friday, uh, I went there to go shopping and the parking lot was half-full. And so I came back yesterday and happened to catch the manager out in front, that was my goal of stopping by there, and their sales are down forty-five percent right now at Costco, uh, because of the new one that's opened up in Brentwood. And Costco is one of our largest sales tax generators in Antioch. And Antioch right now is having a struggle attracting new businesses and retaining the ones that we have. And our sales tax revenue went down one point five million dollars last year, it was readjusted by the finance director and we're showing flat revenues for the next couple of years. And so, economic development-wise, this is going to create property tax, it's going to create sales tax, both, uh, sales tax and Measure W, it's going to create seventy jobs. These jobs are, uh, jobs that make over twenty dollars an hour, up to twenty-five dollars an hour, managers make seventy thousand dollars a year, I understand, at, at these types of restaurants. So these are jobs that people in Antioch can come, can work at, can afford to live in Antioch when they, when they work there. And so, uh, I just think there's a, a lot of good things that have been done. I appreciate the fact that the developer and the architect went back and addressed our concerns after the last meeting and tried to be very sensitive to it, came up with these really nice visuals so that we would be able to clearly see what was going on. Last time we saw this project, I wasn't able to understand really on the small set of plans what exactly was being done, since we were kind of acting like the planning commission and doing the design review on this project. So, uh, so I, I am going to support this project. I think it's a, um, I think it's a positive project for the neighborhood and, uh, and I'm, I, I think it'll be, uh, something that we can be proud of as a community. Yes?
I know this may seem like a little bit of ancient history to people, but there was a newly-elected city council member in nineteen ninety-eight and it didn't take long for me to take a position and make a recommendation to the then-city council that actually made national news. And it was, I was asking the city council to put a moratorium on fast-food restaurants in the city of Antioch because fast-food restaurants were getting built, it seemed like monthly. And the prime, uh, property was being eaten up and I thought, you know, the city of Antioch can do much better than just fast-food restaurants. And as much as we like to praise hamburger Habit, which I eat probably two or three times a month, as well as Chipotle, they are perceived as fast-food restaurants. And so I have a long history trying to change the culture and the direction of the community. And I was very, very happy when the Rothbars came to City Hall and said, look, we have a project we want to build. They bought the property and I embraced it as mayor. And so I worked with them, advocated and was one of their biggest supporters because they had a vision. And the vision was not just In Shape. It was taking that property and actually putting in a grocery store or a Target or something more than twenty years ago. And I've heard the sob stories, but more than twenty years ago. And the world is much different today than it was back then, but nothing happened. And so I sit here and say, well, beggars can't be choosy, so maybe we should go ahead and just embrace this because we're conflicted. We are about, I don't know, fifty, fifty-five million dollars in deficit. So sure, generating sales tax revenue would be a benefit to our community, but this is going to still take a couple of years to build. As a matter of fact, the, the staff report, I underlined this, this is a phased project. And so for a phased period of time, I don't know if that's one year, two years, five years, there will be construction on those three acres. And so I sit here thinking, I have now, you know, nineteen ninety-eight to twenty-twenty-five, twenty-seven years, my vision has not changed. I believe that it is absolutely important that our image in the, our community in Contra Costa County in the Bay Area should be a positive one. Unfortunately, many people look to us as a fast-food city and I think that's unfortunate. And so I have, and I thank Paul and, and Mr. Rothbar and all of you working diligently on this, and I cannot imagine the struggle that you have. But for me, I still have not let go of the vision, not only for that piece of property, but other properties in the city of Antioch. We simply can do and should do better. And the five hundred thousand dollars in sales tax revenue that may be generated five to eight years from now, yes, it will help. But I believe we're selling ourselves short again because the public perception is, oh my God, they're just building that new city council that we had a lot of hope in, or they're just building fast-food restaurants. So I cannot get rid of that vision that I have and I am conflicted because I understand the economic development and the sales tax revenue. But again, from my perspective, as I indicated to Paul on the telephone conversation that I have, I'm struggling with this and frankly, I'm not sure I can, um, vote for it. After the presentation tonight, I thank the applicant for using this two weeks, I think effectively, talking to council members individually and collectively, excuse me, collectively. Uh, but it doesn't change my view. That view when I met you the first time, when you sat there enthusiastically and told me how great your plans were and twenty-seven, or twenty years later, it's still not being realized. So I, I understand the support. Mr. Mayor, I'll be voting no.
All right. Yes, council member Wilson.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but, uh, you know, I too am conflicted on this project. And so i- in, in, um, thank you for reaching out to me and having the conversation. Um, but I did a little research. Um, you know, we often say Antioch is the tale of two cities, nine four five oh nine and nine four five three one. And so when I looked up the median income, because a lot of, you know, a lot of businesses come, they look at spending power, how much spending power does a community have? And so I, you know, all, this location's in the nine four five three one zip code, but, you know, nine four five oh nine has a median income of approximately a little over eighty-one thousand dollars a year. Nine four five three one has a median income of, uh, around a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year. So it's the tale of two cities. And so, you know, I have to ask myself, Antioch, what, what do we want? And have we been conditioned to accept, hey, this is what we can get? It doesn't pencil out, oh, the space is only so big. Um, you know, have we, you know, Brentwood gets it. Brentwood knows the median income of nine four five three one is a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year. In fact, they build a lot of their businesses so close to District Four, my district, it lures people over there. Oh, Antioch's not going to build it, I'll just drive across the way to Brentwood to get it. Um, I get that Roadhouse wouldn't come here, what are the other ones I hear? Cheesecake Factory won't come here. I've had even people talk about Bubba Gump Shrimp and I have to tell them many times, Bubba Gump will only be near a, a attraction like a Disneyland or Fisherman's War or something like that. But, um, I unfortunately can't vote for this. And I just keep going back to, you know, I just listened to, you know, uh, uh, council member Freitas talk about his vision in nineteen ninety-eight and... And, you know, I kind of, you know, I, I, I too have a vision here in twenty twenty-five of what can we do? Um, I eat at Chipotle, Chipotle's, you know, Chipotle's pretty good. Not a Habit Burger fan because they mess up my order every time I'm there, I don't know what that, what their deal is, but, uh, I'll leave that neither here nor there. I, I just can't because I just feel like we have, at a community, have kind of gone, we're Antioch, this is what we're going to get, and why, why have we conditioned our community to think like that, that this is what we can get? I think we can do better. Um, I too have eat at, uh, eaten at El Machete and great food and I don't want to, you know, I, I don't want to impact that business, but, uh, I, I, unfortunately, I can't bring myself to vote for this, uh, tonight. But, uh, great presentation, um, you did answer a lot of questions, but, uh, I, I can't, I, I'm, I'm not there yet, so, thank you.
Yes, council member Torres Walker.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Um, you, I don't speak highly of developers at all, uh, I rarely do. Um, but I don't feel strong-armed or bullied. I think those comments were misleading. I don't feel like, um, the, the presentation came off as being strong, trying to strong-arm the city or bully. What I heard was, um, fresh frustration of, you know, you're, you're trying to meet the expectation of a twenty-year-old vision, right? Um, and, and when we hear comments, it's like, you know, we got to get what we can get. Well, you know, also when you get so old, sometimes you just need to marry so somebody can wake you up when you stop breathing in your sleep, right? Like it's, it's no longer a choice, right? You, you need a companion, you know what I mean? And, um, you need a companion, right? It's, it's no longer a choice. What you envisioned is not going to happen, right? So you have to, you have to take what you can get. Um, I, I think there is a challenge with the city of Antioch and fast food, mostly, the most unhealthiest fast food you can get is actually in District One overall. Um, and I think that like, you know, also, because I was a resident for ten years that spent three hours on the freeway. I wasn't sitting down eating anywhere in Antioch. Everything was fast. When I'm leaving, I'm grabbing food in the morning, if I didn't already have breakfast at home. When I'm coming home, I'm grabbing food. When I get home, if I didn't get home in time enough to cook, because when you a commuter city where the majority of your working population, honestly, does not work in the city of Antioch, that becomes the demand, quick, because I need to get where I need to get. Um, I don't, I don't really care, you know, I don't, I don't really care for cheesecake or, I don't even go to none of those places, it, it doesn't taste well. Anyways, I think that like, I have to agree with the mayor and mayor pro tem, this isn't about healthy food options. At the end of the day, development is, is about revenue and access. And so I, I mean, on that, on that basis, you know, I, I would have to support, I will be supporting this project.
All right, thank you, council.
Just a point of, of, of procedure, so the motion that's on the floor is to approve resolution twenty twenty-five slash forty-seven and twenty twenty-five slash forty-eight. I know cities are different, city attorneys are different. I have always been of the opinion that if the resolu, if the motion is clear, you can adopt multiple actions in one time. But there are situations, for instance, where I've seen cities, they'll approve the SEQA resolution because they don't have any issues with that, but then when it comes to the, the, the development, they'll vote no. So I just, some people will vote no on that. So I just want to say you can chop this up. It's really up to you, I just want to make sure. The motion on the floor at this point is to approve both. So if you want to take them à la carte, you can, but I think because the motion is clear, you also can do that, since I'm new again here, I just wanted to share my view. But you have the ability to chop the resolutions up and take separate votes.
Thank you, um, city attorney. Uh, um, we have a motion in a second, um, can we please cast our votes?
Motion carries three, two, with council member Freitas and council member Wilson voting no.
All right, thank you. You guys want to gather up your stuff real quick and we'll keep moving on. Um, next, we have nine minutes, okay. Well, we have item number seven, Board of Administrative Appeals, appointments for two board member vacancies.
Mr. Mayor, just as a, another point, I do know it, the council wants to consider continuing any item, that's your pleasure. Item number ten has a deadline of May, April first.
Okay. So can we suspend the rules and move item number ten to...
No, can you just go hit due number seven and just turn to good room?
What? I don't know, are we going to go past midnight?
No, do they have to make, are they getting sworn in here? Do they have to make...
No, they don't have, no, they don't. No, we don't have.
Do we just make a motion to approve and congratulate them and move on?
Okay, okay. All right, if that's, if that's what...
Go ahead.
All right, well, let's go ahead and we'll try to, we'll try to move through it this way. Item number seven, Board of Administrative Appeals, appointment for two board member vacancies expiring March twenty twenty-eight, uh, is recommended that the mayor nominate, city council approve the following. First one's adopt a resolution approving the appointment of Jaclyn Higgins to the Board of Administrative Appeals for the vacancy expiring March twenty twenty-eight. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second?
You're just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there is, just for the city clerk, there is no comment request on this item, correct? No public comment request?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have a motion, no, a second?
Second.
All right, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, the second part is to adopt a resolution approving the appointment of Melissa Case to the Board of Administrative Appeals for the vacancy expiring March twenty-eighth, twenty, March twenty twenty-eight. Do I have a motion?
No, no, I'm motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll text you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. All right, we have a motion and a second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, we are on to item number eight. Antioch Police Oversight Commission, appointments for two commissioner partial term vacancies expiring November of 2026, adopt a resolution approving the appointment of Lisa Alakwachi. I'm sorry? Oh, Lisa Alakwachi to the Antioch Police Oversight Commission for one partial term vacancy expiring November 2026. My motion, do you have a second?
Mayor, we have three public comments for this item. First speaker is Ronald, followed by Leslie May and Gavin Payton. Okay.
All right, do we, do we have a motion on this one? Second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
And the second part, adopt a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Susan Kennedy to the Antioch Police Oversight Commission for one partial term vacancy expiring November 2026?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, do you have a second? All right, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, we are on to.
Wait, wait, Mr. Mayor, there is an issue for the future. I didn't wanna stop this train moving. But the mayor has one power that we do not as council members, the power to nominate. None of us can nominate. We can only approve or not approve his recommendation. In the future, when we have vacancies, all council members should receive all applications. Because we have the opportunity, if we wanna call somebody and have a discussion, we have that right to do that. And so I would just simply suggest, in the future, when there's a vacancy, you know, for us, we should have all the applications. But for the public, they should also see who is applying, because they may wanna stand up and voice concerns. But the mayor, you know, ultimately nominates. I'm just suggesting with, again, transparency, that it has always been, for long as I ever remember, you know, in this council, all applications are given, you know, to the council and part of our packages.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Freitas.
We've been asking for that for four years, so thank you for reiterating.
All right.
I will move item number ten.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna point out that there is a time-sensitive issue with item nine as well. I'm told that the staff presentation will be brief.
Okay. Do we wanna?
I still move that we take item ten.
Okay, we have a motion, have a second to move it? Have a motion, a second, cast your votes, please.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number ten, 2024 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, Housing Successor Annual Report and Progress Report for the General Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. California law requires that every jurisdiction in California adequately plan to meet existing and projected housing needs in a housing element as part of their general plan. An annual report is required to be prepared detailing housing development activity and implementation progress. Additionally, state law also requires that a housing successor annual report be submitted annually with the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for city and county housing successors to former redevelopment agencies. Finally, state law requires cities to submit an update of the status of the general plan. All three of these reports are provided in one comprehensive staff report. And with that, I will turn the floor over to Zoe Meredith, our planning manager.
Yeah, good evening. For the interest of time, I'm happy to answer any questions. I had a prepared statement, but if there's specific questions, maybe we can jump to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is time-sensitive. April first is the deadline, today is March 25th. And I, I'm going to move that we approve this, but I would like to request staff come back to the city council in a study session. And we need to have a more formal review of our general plan and our housing element and the fact that things have changed between approvals by planning commission versus the city council. We need to be educated, at least I need to be educated. I still don't understand ministerial approval. And there are other items that I think the council, particularly new members, maybe some old ancient ones, need to be educated. And this is an important, critical issue, and because of the deadline, I'm going to say, let's approve it. But we really need to spend some time on a lot of our issues, you know, with regards to growth. So I, with that, if there's no other speakers, there are speakers?
We do not have any public comment.
Yeah, we have, we have one.
Oh, sorry, Andrew?
We need to, we need to take a vote to extend the meeting.
Excuse me, excuse me, Andrew, one second.
No, I, okay.
Do we have a motion to extend the meeting to twelve thirty?
Twelve, I could go to twelve fifteen.
Okay, twelve fifteen, over. Motion to move, continue the meeting.
Motion.
Extend the meeting to twelve fifteen, second? Cast your votes, please.
Yeah, in the interest of time, I won't take the full three minutes. But I do wanna say that this does sadden me as a community member, to see something come for a vote and then to say, we'll come back later and review it. You know, I understand that the housing element update and approval is very important at a state level to be in compliance. I would, I think, bring the question of, if there was a deadline of April first, why did we put it on the agenda on March 25th? You know, knowing historically how these meetings can run, especially with a packed agenda like this. And so I don't think really that it's fair to consultants or city staff to really have them sitting here until twelve thirty, when they have to show up for work the next day as well. So I hope that in the future, we can schedule accordingly and that community members can have time to weigh in. So I will come back and speak when it does come back, and I'll hold my thoughts till then. But I do wanna say this frustrates me as a community member as well. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I do not have any other comments.
Okay, do I have a motion on this item? Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we have item number nine, Resolution Approving Award of Contract for the 2024-25 Violence Intervention and Prevention Needs Assessment and Strategic Plan.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Brett. Go ahead.
Sorry. Go for it.
Sure.
It's late.
Okay, it's really late. We're seeking approval for the contract for violence intervention and prevention assessment and strategic plan with Hope &amp; Heal Organization. In the staff report, we did reference the decrease of data from local law enforcement of PD and also some community partners that indicated a decline in shooting incidences, incidents in targeted intervention areas like Sycamore. And after conferring with Acting Chief Veal, this is true in the Sycamore area where there's been a significant decrease in gun violence due to direct enforcement, both on PD and the community side, cleanup projects and events, ongoing conversations, and work with community partners. So the Violence Needs Assessment and Strategic Plan will allow and provide this division the necessary roadmap to shape future programs, establish more partnerships, engage the right community stakeholders, and refine our approach. Part of it will also be used to write a really persuasive and convincing CalVIP grant proposal that is coming down the pipeline in August. But we are planning to submit in July because we are committed. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I do have a public comment card from Leslie May, but I do not think she is here anymore.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the city council?
I have, I have one question. So the, the CalVIP grant and what we're doing CalVIP right now, I understand there's an element that has to do with doing an assessment of the, or an audit, I guess, maybe, of the, of the program and how well.
Correct.
How does, how does this differ from the CalVIP audit of the program that's currently going on?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. Two years ago, we did the audit with an organization called Partnership? Public, thank you, Public Private Partnership. And this assessment will add all the components that they did for what the needs are. But they'll also have a piece specific to gun violence, which is what CalVIP focuses on. It'll be a broader Violence Intervention and Prevention Needs Assessment and Strategic Plan for the entire division. But there would be an aspect of the gun violence component that will be used for the CalVIP application.
Okay, thank you for that.
Just for further clarification, the evaluating consultant on the current CalVIP application is only here to evaluate the current, like, the, like, the current project per state requirement. So this, what I'm assuming is this contract could go even further.
Correct.
And more broader than that individual consultant. Because that consultant is only on the project to make sure we are complying with the state. Whereas this consultant seems to be going deeper in an assessment of violence across the city overall, some of our higher crime, I hate to say crime, I like to say harm, areas. And give us as Antioch some specific data so we can actually do what's best for Antioch. Because what's best for every city might not be best for Antioch. And it could also inform our CalVIP Cohort Five application. So we're not applying for dollars that aren't gonna really help our community.
All right, thank you. And then another question, you had mentioned that this is gonna help inform the CalVIP application that's due, that your, the city's planning on submitting in July.
Yes, it's due August eighteenth, but our hope and goal is to submit early.
So that this, this work would be completed prior to that?
Yes. Yes, which is why we're grateful you stayed till twelve fifteen so we can get this fast.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution to award the contract for the 2024-25 Violence Intervention and Prevention Needs Assessment and Strategic Plan?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
All right, item number eleven, Review and Approve the Conceptual Design of the Bicycle Garden Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can we put, April first, are we doing park and recreation?
No, April first is going to be public works. I believe Parks and Recreation will be on April eighth.
Can we push this over to April eighth?
We, we can.
Okay, I'm just having a great time, so I thought we'd keep going, but.
We do have.
We still have nine minutes, so I mean, okay, so, so is it the consensus of council to move item number eleven and item number twelve to the next meeting on, I guess it would be April the eighth?
Yes.
Okay, so we have consensus on that. Okay, excellent. So we will, do we need, City Attorney, do we need a motion formally or can we just?
Yes. You do not need to take public comment on continuance unless someone wishes to speak on either of these items. So does anyone wish, oh, that's the clerk. Has anyone put in a card on either item?
I do not have a public speaker card for item eleven or twelve.
So then you can, you can make, I would suggest you make a motion to continue those items and direct which meeting you want that on.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move item eleven and item twelve to the April eighth, 2025 agenda.
All right, we have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, public comments. Yes, Mr. Becker.
Thank you. Just for clarity, I was gonna make comments on those items until they were reviewed by council. That's probably redundant. I wanted to make a comment tonight, though. I touched earlier on the 100% affordable project that was submitted to the city. A hundred and sixty-five units behind the 711 on East Tregalis, or would that be West Tregalis, I guess, and Hillcrest there. I'm personally excited for the project. I'm a little frustrated that it seems like we can't get a mix of housing, affordable and market rate. Always seems to be one or the other. And I think that we historically have seen what happens to 100% affordable projects. There was a density bonus that was used for this project, so there will be a four-story building that will be going up there. There will not be facade breakups throughout it. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a cookie cutter project similar to what we see in the rest of the Bay Area. I understand the needs of the community, and I'm excited to see there's a good amount of 30%, 50%, and 60% AMI. Historically, I'm looking at the, the team that put that project together, I think that was LGA. That's public funding that's gonna come into that project. I would encourage the city of Antioch to reach out to that developer and understand where that funding is coming from. You know, there is an ingress egress that's gonna come in off of Hillcrest into that property, so there is no turn lane there. People are gonna be coming into a bike lane. I, I would say that this is an opportunity for, as I've said before, AHSC. This project is within a half a mile of BART. You can get up to fifteen million dollars for transit improvements, capital improvements. You can put an actual bus stop with a canopy there. You can put dedicated bike and pedestrian right-of-way improvements. You don't need to pay for them through your general fund. The state of California will give you dollars for it. And what does a developer get for working with you? Up to thirty-five million dollars for their project. BART could potentially get new cars or safety improvements at their site. That round opened up today. That project submitted plans to the city. You are ready to apply today in partnership with that developer. I hope that tomorrow, when you all wake up, after maybe sleeping in a little bit, probably not. Some will be up probably running. I hope that you all can reach out to this developer or reach out to city staff and encourage these partnerships together if they haven't already reached out to city staff themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any staff communication? Oh, I'm sorry, is there any more public comments? Okay, do we have any staff communications?
No staff communication.
All right, council communications and future agenda items?
Actually, just wanna give a quick reminder that the African-American Wellness Holistic Hub Initiative is going before the county board of supervisors in their meeting in April. Wanna state again that I hope that the city of Antioch has a resolution in support of this, as well as have Dr. Kirby and her team, who are the consultants on the project, come here to the city and do a presentation for us as the council, as well as the residents, because they have been making recommendations for this holistic hub to first be piloted in Antioch. And I think it's important for us to be on board and fully support this initiative since it's being led by, largely has been led by Antioch residents over the last three years, to bring critical resources for, trauma-informed resources for residents in the city of Antioch through African-American Wellness. And it's fully backed by the county, but I think us as a city should take a clear position on supporting this initiative. And then lastly, I just wanna say, since I did vote to stay here till twelve fifteen, is I want to just say to the public that sometimes you will witness us up here getting into heated debates. But what you don't see is the conversation that happened behind the scene when we take breaks and we're off camera. I don't tone police people because I don't think it's a genuine request to do that. I, I think we do get into heated spirited debates, like myself and Councilmember Freitas got into tonight.
I forgive you.
Thank you. And we did have a conversation offline, and it's clear that we both would like transparency. We both want the city manager to be successful, and we both want, you know, the city to get the staff that it needs to continue the day-to-day operation for residents. And so some, I just wanted to put it out there because, you know, Facebook is gonna be lit up tomorrow. And it's gonna be like Councilwoman Torres Walker and Councilmember Freitas almost went to blows. But that is not what you saw happen. We've actually had a good working relationship. Anytime we had any miscommunication, we've been open to talking to each other about it. And so I just wanted to clear, you know, all of, all of that up before the opinion papers go crazy. So have a good night.
All right, any other, any other council comment? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second? Please cast your votes. All right. Who didn't vote?
Motion to adjourn at twelve thirteen PM carries five zero.
Meeting adjourned.